Stand with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are.
Alright, we're gonna open public comment at four thirty-two. And then we're gonna move on to the budget.
Thank you. So, good evening, and I wanna take just a moment to thank you. We provide a lot of information, data analysis, a lot of budget materials that we ask you to review, and greatly appreciate, you know, the attention to that information, and really reflecting and, you know, making meaningful decisions based on that information. So in addition to the PowerPoints that we're gonna review this evening, we do have a number of documents, so we've included a budget summary. That budget summary is an Excel sheet that itemizes every account and includes three years of expenditure history as well as budget history, a three-year average, a percent increase or decrease, as well as a default budget by line item. We've included the student enrollments for the, actually for the entire SAU. We have the capital improvement plan, that is a five-year plan where we look at larger capital expenses. Typically those items on the capital improvement plan are standalone warrant articles that we propose to the community. We've included estimated revenues, so when we're looking at the budget, we approve a budget for how we, for our expenditures, how we plan to utilize taxpayer funds for operating expenses. However, there's also revenue, so we do receive revenues in addition to the property tax assessment. There is adequacy aid through the state. We receive Medicaid reimbursements. We receive, you know, banking interest or donations and fees. So we make an estimate at the end of, every fall for the following year, and that estimated revenues goes to the Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue essentially subtracts what our operating budget is by those revenues that we expect to receive, and then they set the tax rate based on that. So the revenues are an important data point just to reference. Additionally, we've included our trust fund summary, so when I say trust fund, those are expendable trusts that we do have here at Seabrook. We have two expendable trusts. That is our special education expendable trust, as well as our building maintenance expendable trust. And both of those are really meant as safeguards for the district to utilize. Obviously, when we create a budget, it's a year in advance. There are many unknowns that we could have, unanticipated costs. Special education is one of those areas where it's very difficult to forecast when students' needs change on a pretty regular basis, when families move into district and out of district. So there can be some pretty significant fluctuations in our special education costs. Similarly, building maintenance is important safeguard as well when we're looking at, you know, building-related items that crop up that we can't anticipate. We had two boilers that went in the last two years that we have to replace, and we were fortunate to have those, that building maintenance expendable trust to tap into in order to fund those replacements. Additionally, we've included our federal grant allocation information and our salary schedules for our three employee classifications. That would be our two unions, our teachers' union and our paraprofessional, our educational associates' union, as well as our non-union employees. And when I say non-union employees, that's our administration, our administrative assistants, our technology staff, our food service workers, and our facilities staff.
Can I just, can I just ask one more? We have some people coming in, I didn't know if they would be able to speak or not.
Public comment is open at, we opened it at four thirty-two.
Thank you.
If anybody wanted to get to speak.
Thank you. Sorry.
So, so for this evening, I'm planning to start the presentation, looking at the PowerPoint, and kind of to give an overview of the budget, and then I'll flip over to the, to the last document that we have, which is our budget worksheets. And the budget worksheets are really the meat and potatoes of the budget. That includes every account with narrative, explaining exactly how we plan to utilize our funds, and rationale for any, you know, any variance, either an increase or a decrease. So, I will note that our budget truly reflects more than just numbers on a page. What it represents is our vision, our priorities as a school district, and truly our shared commitments as a community to really provide for the best educational experience for our students. So, we do believe that this budget does reflect that goal. So, it is important to keep in mind that vision when we look at our budget, because a budget does reflect those values. And our vision shows the dedication to engaging all learners in ensuring that we have developmentally appropriate and research-based instruction in a safe and nurturing environment. So that vision is grounded in the belief that every student deserves the opportunity to grow, not only academically, but socially and emotionally. It truly guides us on a daily basis when we design, you know, our, those educational experiences for our students. And it also anchors our budget decisions that when we look at how to achieve, what we're looking at for outcomes and how to achieve those outcomes. So the FY twenty-seven budget does align with not only the overarching SAU twenty-one portrait of the learner, but it also aligns with our local school improvement plan. The, we're really looking at a number of frameworks that are focused on developing strong academics, healthy mindsets, essential life skills, physical and mental wellness, and positive community engagement. So our investments that are reflected in this budget are meant to support those five priority areas and truly ensure that our students develop the necessary competencies, as well as the confidence needed for success, both in the classroom and beyond. So when looking at our, at our budget, enrollment plays an important piece, and an important data point when we're budgeting. As you, as you can see, we have, we have had an enrollment decline trending over the last several years. We do utilize NESDEC to conduct our annual enrollment projections, and for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are projecting five hundred and twenty-four students. So when we look at that data point, it helps to inform our staffing, our class sizes, and it provides greater confidence, bless you, in order to maintain a continuity and with our academic programming.
Can I ask questions before he goes to the next slide on the enrollment?
Please interrupt me whenever you please. This is, so I'm obviously doing a little PowerPoint presentation, but tonight is meant to be collaborative, let's talk about things. It'll be more like that when we get into the worksheets, but interrupt me now anytime.
Just, it could be for you and the superintendent, the question, SB seven forty-one. I just wanna know if you've had any updates on that. I was reading that the passed, and it's kind of, I don't know if you call it an amendment, to the one where school choice is not gonna be for every kid, and the parent have a right to request, and it's a little bit different than the way we are doing it now. And I just, I'm asking you if you've heard anything about it.
In terms of it passing, no. I heard that it was, that the open enrollment bill was going to be back before the legislature this season. That's the most recent info from the School Board Association.
Okay. Alright, and I also, on enrollment, during our retreat, the school board, unfortunately, it's not recorded, and it really wasn't in the minutes, but we had discussed enrollment. The superintendent had looked at a five-year projected, kinda talking about we should look at that. Our enrollment is down. I mean, five twenty-fourth next year is very low, and the superintendent had mentioned how long can we sustain two schools, two principals, two administrators, all of that, when the enrollment continues to go down? And is it something that we should look at as a board? I really think it is. And I think it's important and fair to the taxpayers that if we're going down below a point where we probably could sustain that type of thing, that we should look at it. And tonight would be, you know, a night for discussion about it.
Thank you. Yeah, so enrollment certainly, when we look at either increasing or decreasing enrollment, that does inform those type of staffing and kind of organizational structure decisions. So that's absolutely, and there are some staffing proposals in this budget due to the decline in enrollment. So it's absolutely a, you know, point of discussion. Because these projections truly are important for those both short-term and long-term. Now that what, that kind of larger kind of administrative organizational change is probably, probably, obviously it's up to the board, more of a long-term plan, but it's something that we should discuss. I know the superintendent did bring it up at the recent goals meeting, and I think we can absolutely have that discussion tonight as well. And thank you Maria for bringing up legislation.
Yeah, I don't know. That's what I was asking for you all.
It's, that's another very important data point for us. I mean, we're, we are constantly trying to stay on top of legislation because there is a lot that comes from the state. So once we get any more information, and we'll look specifically at that bill, we will update the board on what's, what that bill is, if it has any effects on Seabrook, either short-term or long-term. So thank you for bringing that up.
And that was HB seven forty-one, just so you can kind of reference it.
Last year it was HB seven forty-one. I don't know what it will be this year, but the School Board Association is hosting a legislative preview in the December that you all should have received invitations to.
Yeah, and I just, and this is important because, and I'm telling you from being out in the community, if this goes through, that they can take eighty percent of the budget of each student and send them elsewhere, we're gonna be hurting here.
I agree.
So I think it's something that, you know, it's kind of the elephant in the room that we just talk about it. Whether we can do anything or whether it's happening is out of our control, but we certainly need to put it on the table, especially during budget time. So, and the other, with the enrollment too, we've had a lot of four vacant openings and just in EAs, and then we have the opening for the RBT. You're looking at them, they've been sitting there open for quite a while. So how long do we keep asking the taxpayers for the money, but we're not able to fill those positions? So I'm not saying do something with it either way, 'cause I know things fluctuate, but it certainly needs to be on the table. I mean, I don't know how many positions we added this year or programs, or we'll look at that as we go on, but I just think we need to really talk about it. The budgets are not passing. Why are they not passing? So, I just wanted to kind of bring that out.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so enrollment and that, and the decline certainly factors into this budget as I know you've all had a chance to review, and we'll certainly have more discussion about it. As you can see, you know, it's a hundred and, you know, twenty, thirty students that we've lost in the last five years. If you go back ten years, we're talking two hundred and ten student production. We were at seven hundred and thirty-five ten years ago, so.
But recently, we're declining quite a bit. I mean, from twenty twenty-two to what's projected next year. It's quite a bit of kids.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
For whatever reason.
Well, I think that's, that's exactly. Needs to be watched, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's, and that's why we had, you know, in recent budget, we proposed for a reduction of a classroom teacher, which, you know, was put back in. That's why we have some proposals for some reductions this year as well, because of this exact reason.
Okay, thank you.
Also Maria, there is, I don't know if you've signed up for the legislative preview. It's December seventeenth.
Yeah, I have that.
Twelve to one thirty?
Yeah, I have that.
Thank you. Do everybody else?
I already signed up.
Oh, do everybody else have it?
I would think so. It's in the emails.
Yeah, I said I did.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, so embedded in the operating budget is cost of living adjustments for those aforementioned three employee classifications. We have our, both of our unions that are, those cost of living adjustments are determined via the collective bargaining agreement that was passed via warrant article by our voters. But then we have our non-union employees who we benchmark their COLA to the Consumer Price Index, so that's CPIU for our geographic area, Portsmouth area. We look at, we benchmark it against July of twenty, of the previous year, so in this case, July of twenty twenty-four to July of twenty twenty-five. So it's a consistent benchmark every year. In this case, that index rose three point two percent, so we are recommending an SAU-wide cost of living adjustment of that three point two percent. That consistent database approach just helps to keep a fair and equitable compensation aligned with inflation across all our districts.
Can I just make a comment to that? I just wanted to add something. I, because we obviously look through and you see the different pay scales and different things. I just, me looking at them, I see some that are like almost brand-new people making way more money than people that have been here a lot longer, and I know there's steps, and I know that are placed into it. But I think for administration, because of us keeping people here or hiring people, that we really need to pay attention to that and make sure that we're offering enough to bring people in too. I think it's important.
Competitive, competitive compensation is very important. So we do, we did create salary schedules for all of our employees, and those are based on a comparable analysis versus other districts that are similar to us in our geographic region. And a new employee may be higher on the salary schedule based on their level of experience beyond Seabrook. So they might be their first year at Seabrook, but they're step eight because they worked seven years in another district. So that's, that's how the employees are placed on the salary schedule.
Is that the same with non-union employees?
So that's the same for all of our employees, whether it's non-union or teachers or educational associates.
Is it also based on how many years that they've been here?
Exactly. So it's, it's the number of total years. So number of years that you've worked in that position, whether it's here or at a different district. But it has to be relevant to, so it needs to be the same position, right? So if you're a teacher, if you're a, so example, if you're an educational associate, and then you became, for eight years, and then you become a teacher, you're step one teacher. But if you were a teacher somewhere else for eight years, and then one year in Seabrook, you're a step nine.
So it follows you.
Yeah.
Right. And that's, and that's standard across education. So our proposed FY twenty-seven operating budget does total nineteen million, two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. That is an increase of four point seven five percent over FY twenty-six. So this budget does reflect what is required to maintain a high-quality instruction, fulfill all of our legally mandated services, support staff and students, and operate a safe and well-maintained facility. That proposed budget is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and six dollars higher than the default budget, and that differential represents the essentials resources needed to deliver programs and supports for our students. I will note that that's a pretty narrow default budget differential between our proposal and default, which does indicate how lean this budget is. We, it's a four point seven five percent increase, but we have, we are only including what is, what is absolutely necessary. We took a hard look.
Is that all contractual?
We'll see another, the next slide, it really highlights.
I just apologize, but I couldn't get into this until you know that.
Yeah, no, I know there's a technical difficulty, so.
Yeah.
But yes, contractual, most, most of the items are contractual or legally mandated. When you, when we calculate the default budget, that's a statutory number. So it's intended to be last year's budget and then increase or decrease by contractual, legally mandated items, or reduce by any eliminated positions or one-time expenditures. But that does not account for contractual items that, that haven't been previously approved. So for example, our bus contract, we can't budget for the increase from the year because the community didn't approve that percent increase every year. But we have an increase every year because that's, that's how contracts work. Same thing for health insurance. We can budget for the increase for our union health insurance increases because they were approved for a four-year CBA, which includes those increases. But our non-union employees, even though health insurance premium rates, they increase every year, we can't budget for that increase for our non-union employees because that wasn't approved previously via like our union employees. So there's, there are, even though we say it's increased by contractual items, it's only certain contractual items. It's contractual items that have been approved previously by the community. So, when looking at the budget, there's always key drivers that contribute to either the increase or decrease. The first item that really affects this budget is the fact that the FY twenty-six budget failed last year. And actually, as Maria alluded to, we've gone to defaults three times out of the last four years. So that's, that's three failures at ballot. So it does continue to amplify those increases because we're starting at a lower level, right? So we're starting at a lower baseline. We also have those aforementioned contractual salary obligations for both our union and non-union staff. And to Maria's points, those are really important. It's important that we do continue to provide cost of living adjustments so that we have competitive salaries to be able to attract and retain the best quality staff members across our entire district. I'll also note that when we look at school budgets, people, personnel represent about eighty-five percent of the budget. That's the driving cost when looking at the overall budget. It's about eighty-five percent. You're looking at salaries and benefits of those costs. So when we have, you know, salary adjustments, that has an impact on the overall budget. Additionally, health insurance costs did increase, and primarily, we actually have a, a very, essentially, no increase to our health insurance premium increase. However, we've had employee election changes. So when employees get married or they have children, they could go from a single to a two-person plan or to a family plan, or if we have turnover in staff and, you know, we, someone leave the district that didn't take health insurance, but we hire someone that has a family plan, those type of changes can really fluctuate with our health insurance rates. In some cases, that could work to our advantage, right? We could, we could hire someone that doesn't take a health insurance plan. However, in this case, we did see some substantial election changes, which drove up our health insurance costs significantly this year. Across the district, we continue to experience inflation, and that's really across the board, with construction materials, contracted services, utilities, software, essentially all items. When we look at facilities or food service, those are all, those have all been affected by inflation. Any labor, so if we're ever, if we're hiring anyone or contracting anyone, labor costs have increased. Now, I'm sure you're all, you've all seen your costs increasing at home. You're seeing higher grocery bill, you're seeing higher bills to heat your home, to, just your cost of living adjustment has, or cost of living has increased. And that's the same for our, for our school budget. We're seeing those same increases, and that, that has contributed to this increase. So where we, where you see increases, or even, so even if you see an account that may be level funded or decreased, that, that's, may, that may actually mean that we're making some pretty big reductions because on a unit basis, it's going up. We're just purchasing less units because, as you see, we have less, we have less enrollment. So even though those accounts that haven't really changed that much, the prices are going up. We're just purchasing less of it. So that may not be really apparent in the budget, but those are, those are, that is affecting all of our accounts across the board. And then finally, special education costs have risen, and that is based on individual student needs. And we, and we are obviously required to provide those services based on individual IEPs for those students. So when you factor in all of those items, they are essential increases, and they are, they are meant to maintain programs, fulfill our contractual, legally mandated obligations, and really continue to meet the needs of all of our students. So on the flip side, we also identified some areas where we could make some reductions. So first, we did, we are proposing to reassign two of our interventionist positions from general education into special education, and that aligns our staffing more closely with our actual student service needs. What this means is, or what is embedded in that change is our special education department needs two additional special education teachers. So we're, I'm sorry, one additional special education teacher. We have another special education teacher coming off, off a grant, an IDEA grant. So it's coming on, two are coming onto the budget, only one person increase. And we're, we're looking at our general education classrooms and services, and we have significantly lower numbers of students. So we've, we've reduced two of the interventionist positions and moving, we're gonna reassign them into special education. Now, when I say them, I don't mean it's necessarily an interventionist who's getting moved because it's based on, it's just a position. So it's, it's all, how we move the staff members is based on their tenure and their certifications. So it's, it's all, how we move the staff members is based on their, their tenure and their certifications. Um, so that's, that's how that's gonna be determined, um, not, so when I say interventionist, I don't mean that, that, you know, when you look at our list of interventionists, it's not necessarily one of those people, it's just one of those positions are being shifted.
Well, that's different words.
So, yeah.
I don't have that.
Um, so to kind of collaborate with Maria on that, can you please be more specific on, um, what you mean by you're taking and moving that position of an interventionist of math or a reading interventionist or even a general education teacher to support an existing teacher in a classroom and, and moving that position to a special education? How does that look? Where is it going?
So it'll be two less intervention, intervention positions. I'm just saying the per- it may not be the person moving to special education.
For regular ed.
Right, I know it's not a specific.
It could be that they move to a classroom and then a classroom teacher moves to special, I mean, it's moving parts as far as the people. But there'll be two less interventionists.
For the regular ed.
For, for example.
And I think that is just, how, what word do I want? We have been sitting here for how long?
Disgarding.
Yeah, okay.
Disgarding, yeah.
Um, we have been sitting here for years, um, years and years and years, saying we want, you know, better. We want um our students to do better. We do not want kids leaving here, going elsewhere because the education is not as good as what the family would like it to be. We are now saying we're gonna take those wonderful positions that we have put in and maybe not the people, but we're gonna now take two of them and make them just solely special education for what is, what is that, sixty or seventy students we're talking about?
We're talking about our legal obligations to those students.
Yeah, but I'm talking about a number of students um versus four hundreds and some odd students. And we're gonna take more away from regular education. I, I, I think that is like, we need to look elsewhere. That's just my opinion because those interventionists, what they've done over the past few years, and we've all seen it. And we just hired another one that I think it was Colleen that was, somebody was raving about the one we just hired as well. Um, and then now I'm looking at, okay, let's take them from general ed and that, those two positions, maybe not people, and bring them to special education. What happens to those two people if they're not the two you bring over to special education? They go, they're done?
No.
So if you apply interventionist right now for regular education, whether it's math, reading, and you're gonna add or take or reassign two for special education, how can you do that without losing two on the other side of a regular education? I don't understand.
Well, no, the, there's.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't lose people. We would real- reallocate those positions. And the administrative team had a lengthy conversation about that. We don't disagree with you. Twenty percent of your population here is identified for special education, so that's about a hundred and twenty five students, a little over that. Um, the service needs are such that we need those additional supports in special education in order to comply with our legal obligation. In order to do that, our choices are to take away regular classroom teacher positions, take away intervention positions, or add to your budget. So we're happy to have that conversation and if the board wants to go in a different direction, we're happy to do that. The recommendation of the administrative team is to reassign the interventionists because the class sizes are quite small moving forward. And we've also believed that the changes that have been made to the curriculum and instruction over the last few years are moving us in the right direction in terms of outcomes for children.
But no, we are near where we wanna be, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And I think taking more away from regular education, because we hear this almost every meeting now.
So again, we're gonna come back to this when we discuss staffing. If the board wants to move in a direct, different direction or tells us it wants to just add those two positions to the budget, we're happy to have that conversation. We're trying to manage your resources as efficiently as possible, doing what we think is in the best interest of students.
As we mentioned, a hundred and twenty, twenty students in the last three years reduced. Two hundred and ten students have been, um, less students in the last ten years. We have class sizes K through three of ten. Um, we, you can provide that individualized personalized instruction, um, in that, that tier two intervention um with those small class sizes. So, um, like Meredith said, we will, we'll address this, the staffing when we get to um that, that account. Is, is the board's prerogative, and we can certainly add those positions back, um, or look elsewhere. Um, that is, that's your decision. This is, this is our recommendation.
Yes, um, but even though we're gonna talk about it later, I like to talk about it while you're bringing up the bullets, if you don't mind. Um, my, my question is RBT, for instance. We have one, we have one open. That position is not mandated by anybody and it is here that the board decided maybe we need more of that. But before, I would wanna see, um, the interventionist positions that we have into place or adding or however you're gonna do it, that's gotta be lost somewhere through this. Um, that would be places to look. Also, like I said, all these vacant openings that you haven't filled in over a year.
But they're also mandated by law, right? The special education, because we could have general ed EA positions, but the, the positions that are unfilled are.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, yeah. If they're mandated by law, why haven't we built them?
The special ed positions.
Because we're using.
Because we can't find employees, so we're.
But you're using regular education EAs to fill those positions.
Correct, which are not mandated by law.
Right.
Right? Those are, um, un- under the choices, those are a nice to have, and I don't say that to be flippant. I say that because we have to meet our legal obligations first, and so yes, we have reassigned general ed EAs to support special education.
Are we needing our legal education?
Um, as best we can and we're documenting it when we can't.
But we're not. But we're not.
Neither are ninety percent of the school districts in this country right now.
Well, I know, but we're kind of in the, under the microscope for that, so we're not eating it.
Of course.
So.
I can turn to just the RBT piece in particular, and again, we're gonna discuss staffing.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Those are services also written into IEPs, so I just wanna be clear.
And we do have one, right?
RBTs, we have rate outlaws.
We have one, yeah.
We have multiple.
But you have an opening.
I don't know if it's still vacant or not.
It's like contracted service.
Yeah, we contracted for the vacant position.
Okay.
So additionally, we did make a targeted reduction, um, in ESOL contracted, um, services. That's based on student need. So as you know, we, um, the SAU provides ESOL teaching, um, instruction at the SAU level and we, um, we allocate those services to each district and depending on the need, we, we move that, that position and those allocated funds accordingly. So Seabrook did see a reduction there, so we were able to see savings um for ESOL. Um, and then I, I kind of alluded to it earlier when we're talking about the increases due to inflation, but we, we took a look at every account and made um general reductions, um, you know, across the board. Um, we, you know, our departments made their requests and we prioritized um all of those discretionary accounts um and looked at where we could make um, reduce costs. Um, so just um big, big picture, um, you know, when you look at our overall operating budget, um, it's really driven by four primary areas, um, contractual salary adjustments, special education services, employee benefits, and then special education transportation. So those four items account for eight, eight hundred and five thousand dollars of the total increase. The total increase is eight hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. So if all, the rest of the budget, all the, the other items make up only sixty six thousand dollars in increases. Um, so that means the, the vast majority of, of the increase is tied directly to contractual and legally mandated items. So at this point, um, the PowerPoint continues in detail, but why don't we um go to the worksheets and then we can go account by account, um, have some of these important staffing discussions, um, and, and go forward. So let me just.
You don't wanna hit that next page?
These are just the summaries.
Yeah.
So we're, we're going to go through, so there's like, for each one of these paragraphs, we're gonna, we're, there's multiple accounts that we're gonna go into detail.
They're good, they're good.
We're gonna go through the worksheet, there's a number.
Mm-hmm.
Multiple, yeah, just like in the.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying, these are, this is good for people to hear those numbers, 'cause they don't have the attachment we have.
They do. They're all public.
And we'll also be, I'll be, I'll be presenting the, the entire budget, um, you know, at, at the delivery session, so, and to the budget committee.
But I know, Matt, that tonight really is the school board's night to work for the taxpayers and the students and the administration and the staff. 'Cause we know what this is for, that night, when you bring it forward is wonderful. But tonight really is a hard, um, conversation and looking at however you wanna do it, line by line or whatever the board feels.
Yeah, I.
But it definitely is the night tonight for us to.
Well, I, I can.
Right, but, while we're moving to the details.
I will, I mean, it is entirely, you are correct, it's entirely the board's decision.
Right.
If you don't wanna go into detail, if you want a high level, I can do the PowerPoint. But I, I just thought the board might wanna see the detail.
I'd rather go into detail. How about the other board members?
Well, I think it's right here on front of the desk, right?
Yeah, we'll do the budget worksheet. That's what we usually do.
I, I'm willing to do anything, but the PowerPoint's easier for me. I'm happy to do the PowerPoint.
Yes, I'm.
Yeah.
Just if, yeah, I mean, whatever you wanna do, but the PowerPoint's good for the public too, so.
Yeah, and we, and when we, when we present to the public, we'll all do the PowerPoint. I'm not gonna do the budget worksheets, so.
Right.
And all of these, all of this, these documents will, are, will be publicly available.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, um, we're, we're, we're starting off with the, with the most difficult account. Um, this is the largest account. This is our salary certified staff, um, budget for four million three hundred and eighty four thousand nine hundred and fifty two dollars. Um, this um represents um all of our um general education um teachers. Um, so that's not only our classroom teachers, but also our um UA teachers, our interventionists. Um, so you, you can see, um, if you look at, on this page, we have a, um, a chart that shows every grade projected for next year, um, with our enrollments, um, the number of teachers, and the class size. Um, so as you can see, our, um, you know, our class sizes are, are, are very small. Um, and this, this is what's, so, you know, eleven students, um, K one and two, um, and then, you know, thirteen or fourteen students, um, three, four, five, six, and eight. Seventh grade is a little larger. It's, it's one, um, one class, uh, that class has, you know, closer to eighteen. So when we look at those, those class sizes, those, those, I mean, those are exceptionally small and they do offer the ability for our teachers to really work um closely with our students um on a more personalized level, um, and provide um the support that would not necessarily be offered if it was, you know, class sizes of twenty, right? Which it wasn't that long ago where our class sizes were closer to, to twenty. Um, so when we see that, w- we, we understand that we all, we need to make a proposal that, that makes sense for school operations and that is, that's fiscally responsible. And that's why we, um, we feel that we can accomplish our educational goals with that reduction of two interventionists. Now, obviously, that, the board has the discretion to, to add those, to, to put those right back in. Um, we, we felt it was our responsibility to make that proposal, um, based on, you know, you know, educational standards and what a typical class size looks like. Um, you can make the argument that there should be greater reductions. Um, we, you know, if there were, you know, we may wanna consider, the board may wanna consider when there are retirements or teachers leaving, that we don't fill those positions at these levels. However, you don't have to. You can, we can continue these, these staffing levels if that's, if that's the, if that's how the board wants to proceed. We will gladly take more staff, absolutely. We are not gonna fight you at all. We would, we, we will take all the teachers in the world. Um, but this is our proposal, um, it's a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Um, that's the salary, um, for those two positions, to reduce two positions. Um, there's an additional, you know, you know, roughly, you know, probably eighty, ninety thousand dollars in, in benefits. That's, that's FICA, that's the New Hampshire Retirement System employer contribution, which is twenty percent, and that's, um, that's health and dental, um, those, those, um, benefits.
So I'm just.
I just wanna, can I close public comment?
Yeah.
Um, at five fifteen, is there anybody that is, wants to get up and speak?
You think this room would be full, but.
I'm gonna close public comment at five fifteen.
And I just have a question. So, um, before when you spoke about moving two teachers in, like, general ed, uh, interventionist to this, you said one was paid for by the IDA, IDEA grant?
So the two, so two, um, the two special education adds.
Yep.
One isn't a new person. It's just a, um, we have a vacancy, so it isn't a new per- it is two new people, but we already, we already budgeted for one of those. It's just funded via the IDA.
Oh, that's, that was a question.
So it's the funding source.
Okay.
However, we have to pull that out of the IDA grant because of the amount that we're receiving. Um, and it's now in our operating budget.
Is that this open, key standard special instructor position?
Yes, that is part-time fellow, right?
Third party, right?
We have a long-term self-part-time.
No? Oh, okay.
So we're going from five to seven, even with this? Or were we going from, I'm, I'm still not understanding, uh?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
We go from five interventionists to seven, but two are gonna be called interventionist special education teachers? How's that working?
No, no, we're, we're reducing two interventionists.
Correct.
And we're adding two special education teachers. Although one, one of them is already there. It's just coming out, it's just added to the budget.
But it's not guaranteed that they will be moved into that position.
It's a vacant position. Two at general education staff members will be moving into special education. We don't know who they are, we, but the interventionist positions, two of them are going away.
That's, that's the proposal.
That's the proposal. Obviously, that's up for debate.
How do you manipulate that if, if we go to default? It's because it, 'cause we just talked about how we're, you know, we have, we're obligated legally to, to meet our quota, which we, we have been. So what happens after if we hit default?
So if we go into default, that's a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars that we have to reduce from our proposed budget.
Right.
Proposed budget.
But it's for special education. To cover those two positions, how do we cover those that are legally mandated?
We will, we will, we will need to cover those, so the cuts will have to be elsewhere.
Yeah.
So you would have to do this almost regardless if it passes or not, if I'm taking broad spectrum.
Well, if you, if you add these two positions into your budget, you're adding a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? To already the different, differential in your default budget, which is a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars.
Yep.
So that differential would increase.
Right.
Right? To three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, right? Or three hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, whatever it is, for round numbers.
Just for the, yeah.
So then if we wind up in default, we have to cut to that amount of money.
Right.
Right? As proposed, if you wind up with a default budget, we have to come up with a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Special ed positions aren't going to be affected because no matter what, we're gonna need seven special education positions, right? Based on what we currently know about student needs.
Yeah.
So we'd have to look at.
Other areas.
Everywhere in the budget and try to, try to see where we can make the least impactful counts, just like we've done the last few years.
So I think we really need to try to push the budget and pass.
And that, and, and part of, I'm sorry.
And become great here. No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, part of this proposal is, is bringing forward a budget that is, that could potentially pass, right? If we, if we don't make reductions, we, if we bring out eight, nine percent increase to the, the public,
Yes.
First start.
I'm just worried that that won't pass and we'll have to make the cuts anyway. Um, or for different reasons, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's, that's our mindset. It doesn't mean that's the way you need to go. So that's what we're proposing.
Right.
Hypothetically, if we move towards switching and shifting people around, are any of the interventionists now special ed certified? Or is that gonna mean a lot more shifting?
So there is a, there's provision in your collective argument agreement around reassignment. So yes, a person who was reassigned would have to be certified and it could mean more than one switches, right? Uh, initially, you look for volunteers, right? There's a whole process laid out in the CBA and that's what we would follow. So that's why we can't tell you today who those people would be or exactly what that would look like.
Not, yeah, I'm, I'm, just one, I know they have to be special ed certified, so I guess I'm asking, within the pool that's currently interventionist, are there any people certified or would we?
within the pool that's currently interventionist, are there any people certified or wouldn't?
Again, there there are, but that wouldn't necessarily be what drives the decisions, yes, we have other.
Okay, but I just, that's, no, oh, oh, I don't know, are just.
We have people within the district who are certified in special ed who are not currently in special ed roles.
I know, doesn't say who is moving and just. Okay.
So we have the opportunity to make that happen, but it it, if there aren't volunteers, it could be some reassignments and there's a provision for that in the CBA.
Couldn't be another type of position. Yeah, I just wanted to see if, like, if none of them were then removed, there would be a lot of movement, now it's just, could be, could not, right?
Yeah. But are they, are they, are they not?
Yeah, there there certainly available staff members.
Some are, some are, as in two are, so that.
But this is for next year's.
It doesn't mean that it would be the intervention people necessarily who would be reassigned, right? Because of the way your collective bargaining agreement is written.
Correct.
So I don't wanna say, we have two people, so people are thinking automatically that those are the two people who were reassigned, because that's not how the reassignment provision is laid out.
But they could be, they could be those people or they could be other.
Correct.
It could be a classroom teacher that gets reassigned. And an interventionist moves into a classroom, like, there's a mo- a lot of moving parts depending on certifications and tenure. And then interest, ideally, there's some, we have staff members that may be interested in these roles.
Right.
Well, you'd rather have.
That's our first choice, right?
Right. Because you don't wanna move somebody.
We just, we just can't answer that question, because we don't know at this time, so.
Then I have to.
The unknown is what I don't like, 'cause I like to know. Well, we.
We don't, we don't have a crystal ball.
Well, we don't, so maybe we should just put that money right back in to not, to avoid the mess.
Yeah.
It's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Well, and we.
That's not benefits, that's just salary.
Well, it's, it's, that's just the salary, so it's closer to, it's just under two fifty, I think, total, so.
Right.
Um.
And we can do that as a board.
Yeah.
If we want to, but what Matt is saying, he's trying to keep it fiscally responsible as close as we can, so we can get the budget passed.
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't I continue and we can always come back to this, right?
Yes. Yeah, yes, I think we need to move on.
Yeah.
I think we expect that we're gonna come back to lots of different areas, like today, like we wanna get as much information in front of you as possible, so you have the big picture of the budget and then.
Right, if we need another night, the, we have a night.
Correct, and then we have, we have two other meetings scheduled and.
I just think we need to be respectful, Michelle, but if a board member does have a question, whether it's tonight, uh, the next time, that we're allowed to say it, I mean, it might keep a little longer.
I think you've been speaking, so I don't know, so.
Yeah, but I'm, you're moving along, so.
But we're trying to, because I don't think you can answer this question without the context of the full budget, is what we're trying to suggest.
Okay, so that's alright. Yeah.
So, um, page eight is um our salaries for educational associates, we're budgeting two hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. Um, so these are are our edu- um, general education, um, educational associates, these are the, um, so as you can see, here's a listing. Um, these are our EAs that are in um our general education classrooms, um, supporting our our lower grade levels, um, some of that early literacy and um foundational, um, you know, math skills. Page ten, we budgeted five hundred dollars um for tutor salaries. Um, this would be for if we ha- we if we had to um have any tutors to assist with five oh four, um, or homebound students.
Do you have tutors for homebound students?
Well, last year, last year, we we did not, um, this year, um, do either of you know, if I don't believe so, that's far off the top of my head, I don't think so.
We have. Okay.
It 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 occurs from time to time and it can be for medical needs, it can be for special education, well, these are not special education
Oh, yeah.
needs, but it it's typically for medical needs, but it can be for other reasons as well.
Then come on.
Hmm.
A few years ago, we um we'd spent a a good amount out of this account, because we we did some targeted focused tutoring, if you recall, in our RAN block, and did some after-school tutoring, and that came out of this account. So that's, um, we don't have that plan, but um but should it arise, we do have some available funds, yeah. Um, page eleven, we budgeted a hundred and five thousand dollars for our um substitute teachers. Um, I will note that we did increase the daily rate um slightly from a hundred and twenty dollars a day to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day to remain competitive um in our region.
How many subs do we have in all this now?
We don't wanna start over.
Is that, okay.
We have, we we have a.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah, we have a um, SEUY, we have a large sub-list, we're in good shape. Um, however, they can choose the districts, I'm not certain how many are servicing us here at Seabrook, we can certainly get that information.
Right.
Okay, I think we had like one when school started and I would say at least five or six now.
Yeah, we're in much better shape for when schools started, yeah.
Better shape, yeah, oh, that's fair, sure.
That's that's one of those positions that it's hard to define people.
Hmm.
Page twelve, we budgeted seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars for contracted services, so this is that um ESOL. Um, um, teaching position that I, or contracted services that we contract through the SAU that I referenced earlier. Um, as you can see, is a pretty substantial decrease, um, we had, we had budgeted eighty-six thousand dollars last year, that's um, you know, being reduced to seventeen thousand dollars, and that's purely a byproduct of the number of students that require ESOL services.
I have a quick question, this might be, my brain might not be working, but why is the default seventeen, three sixty-one and not eighty-six, four four three?
Yeah. That's a great question, um, that is because it is, um, it's, those those are, um, we are required to provide those ESOL services. So, if it, if we had an increase, it actually would have matched up to like, if it had gone up to a hundred thousand dollars, the default would have been a hundred thousand, because we're required to provide those services.
Okay.
But similarly, if it goes down, we we also reduce it, it's only.
So it's basically what you're required, it's your default and your last year's line item, okay.
It's what, right, um, but it's a great question, because the default oftentimes is the last, it's the prior year's number, and it matches up from the last year.
Right, right. Thank you.
Page fourteen, we budgeted twelve hundred dollars for repair and maintenance of equipment. Uh, so this would be general education equipment um that needs repair, so we're not purchasing the equipment, this is to repair, maintain equipment. Um, specifically, we we expect to spend some money on on servicing our microscopes next year. Page fifteen, we budgeted twenty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars for rental lease equipment, so this is our um, our um school-wide um copier and printer contracts, um, so our our lease as well as the, you know, the the toner, the the, it's a managed um print service. Um, also in this account is our um, our laminator and our postage machine. Page sixteen, we've budgeted fifty thousand dollars for supplies, so these are all your, our general education supplies across all of our, you know, various classrooms, as well as, you know, when you look at our art, um, our art room, all the supplies that are that are embedded in our art program, uh, our PE supplies, um, you know, music and band supplies. Page seventeen, we budgeted fifty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars for books, print media, so this would be all of our, um, all of our books, all of our consumables that our classrooms use, that our teachers um utilize on a daily basis, um, with our students. As you can see, we do list it out by, um, you know, by some certain, some certain areas such as math curriculum, ELA curriculum, um, ARCA's curriculum, ESOL books, um. That is roughly the same as we had um budgeted for last year.
Matt, on the um books and things, is that, the, are they purchased by the school or are they purchased through the SAU office?
Those are, those are purchased um at the school level.
Cause we have kids that did not have books this year for certain classes at the start of the school year, and that made it difficult. Those teachers have to copy all those pages and ready, so I just hope moving forward, that doesn't happen again, cause the money's there, I don't know what happened.
What are you talking about? What books?
Books.
Like which books?
Uh, workbooks for classrooms.
Math workbooks?
Math, English, whatever they are, those books, I know we had some missing for.
I mean. Well, some orders were late, so that was part of it.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we ordered everything, but we don't control when they come in, so we had to have some, cause they were late.
And the water didn't mesh too. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Alright, page eighteen, we budgeted six thousand eight hundred dollars um for general education equipment, so, um, you know, this would be, you know, whiteboards, easels, um, like our musical equip- equipments, um, you know, guitars, um, those type of items. Now.
Do s- some of the students with musical instruments, like in the middle school, do they purchase their own?
Yes, rental records.
I agree, so.
Okay.
Alright, now we're moving on to special education. On page twenty, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars for our special services director's salary. Page twenty-one, we budgeted one million one hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty dollars for our certified staff salary. So these are um our special education um teachers. Um, you can see on the next page, continued, shows the addition of the um, of the the ones.
Um, I'm sorry, you, cause you kind of glued by that a little fast. Is the uh cell phone allowance, is that a part of the CBA, about a a part of the contract?
No, so the spec- special services director is not part of the union, that's a non-union position.
Right, is that a part of the con- it's in the contract for the twelve hundred?
It's in the contract.
In the, in their, um, yes, in their administrative contract, yeah.
Is the twelve hundred in the contract or is the cell phone allowance in the contract?
It's a hundred dollar a month cell phone allowance.
Okay. My bill's forty dollars a month.
Yeah, can that come out or be decreased? You know, it's a little.
I don't need to be nitpicky, but.
Then you revisit the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you receive the, whenever we bring a contract, an administrative contract to you, um, that would be the time to address that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, for the, our um special education teachers, you can see that there is a proposal for um one additional teacher, and then it just notes that there's, we have a special education teacher that's already budgeted, but it's funded via IDEA, that's coming onto this operating budget. Um. Page twenty-three, we budgeted four hundred and four thousand three hundred and nine dollars um for our specialist salaries. When I say specialists, that would be our occupational therapist, our soc- social worker, school psychologist, um, our board-certified behavior analyst, um, and um, and then some summer work. Page twenty-four, we've budgeted seven hundred and sixty-two thousand twenty-one dollars um for our special education educational associates. So, um, this, um, there is a proposal um to include, to add one additional um EA. Um, and again, that's based on student need. Um, you can see the listing of our educational associates, um, and as noted earlier, there are um a number of vacancies um that we are currently filling through um, through general education um support.
So that'd be proposal five, I'm just, like, those four plus another one, that are seen, but we hope to fill them.
That there would be one additional.
Of.
Yes.
You have four not filled and you wanna add another one?
Correct.
So.
I mean, the the services are being fulfilled through our general education EAs, uh, but the positions are currently vacant, we are currently trying to hire for them. Um, we also, I I believe there's one that's being filled via contracted service.
Yeah, I got that.
So page twenty-six, we've budgeted sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for our um administrative assistant in the special education departments. Page twenty-seven, we've budgeted eighty-six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars um for um other salaries. So this is um for um our our RBTs, so our registered behavior technicians. Um, I'll note that there are two included in the budget, and then we have two that are being funded via IDEA. So when we, when we move that one teacher out of IDEA, we move two RBTs as a lower cost into IDEA. Um, just to match up the costs, cause we had less funds in in IDEA available.
So with that said, the two RBTs you moved, you can move the grant, say that again, Matt, just.
So two, two RBTs are being funded via the operating budget and two are being funded by the grant. But you can see, last year, we budgeted a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That's because all four were budgeted in the budget, so we moved, in this budget, we're funding two of them out of the grant. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I know, it's a lot of moving parts, a lot of information to digest. Again, please feel free to ask any questions, and we can always move back to any account, um, answer any questions you may have. Page twenty-eight, we budgeted two thousand dollars for workshop seminars, so this is um for our special education staff to attend to any um, you know, professional development outside of the school, and for a conference, a seminar, workshop, those type of PD opportunities. Page twenty-nine, we budgeted three hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars for professional services. So, when I say professional services, that that is when we contract out for special education services from an outside firm. So that would be, um, you know, Miracle Farm provides speech um, speech services, we have, um, you know, Exor Hospital, we have, this is where the NEC program, cause we contract NEC for our NEC program um in-house, um, those type of um services.
So our NEC program could cover some of these services, is that what you're saying, or we still need those in addition?
These are in addition.
No, those, these, yeah, these are different services.
In addition. So the NEC, the NEC program did not decrease those areas at all?
The NEC program is di- not designed to address speech and language, hearing, physical therapy, audiology services, social worker, um, orientation and mobility services. The NEC program provides a teacher, um, and a board-certified behavior analyst to support a program supporting students with autism specifically. Um, and so those costs are what is reflected for the New England Center for Children.
And what you, I think we.
What that is used to allow us to outplay, serve the service of students here rather than in out-of-district placements.
So we don't need to help.
That doesn't mean that we won't still need out-of-district placements, but the individual out-of-district placement is depending
That's why I said that.
Yeah.
from seventy-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars depending on the needs, plus typically transportation.
And we added um that program for the middle school, right, this year?
We did not add NEC for the middle school, we have a special education teacher.
We don't. Okay, so what's not NEC?
To support students with autism.
Okay, gotcha. I thought we added the program, we pushed it up a little bit.
We added a program to support students with autism, but NEC is not running the program at the middle school.
Okay.
And that would basically mean the kids that were supported in the elementary school, give them continued support when they reach the middle school.
Correct, and the intent is they don't need the same level of intensive supports that are provided by the New England Center for Children specialized staff when they reach the middle school, because.
Right, but they still should have some support, correct.
Yeah, it's an extension, uh, and then, and when we get to the tuition account, that's the account where um we we recognize potential savings um from this, from servicing these students in-house as opposed to placing them out of district.
And, oh, just one question, um, when, so say we have a child that is in eighth grade, um, we we place them out of district and technically they would be in eighth grade here if they, if they went here, when they move to One Acuna, the, we've.
Those costs move to one.
To One Acuna, okay, thank you.
On page twenty-nine, I'm sorry. Page thirty, we've left a dollar in our evaluations testing account to leave the uh, to leave the account open for future need. Page thirty-one, we've budgeted twenty thousand dollars for legal, so this is our um, our account to fund and legal expenses related specifically to special education. As you can see by some of our expenditure history, it can vary widely, um, and that's based on individual, you know, needs.
And you're comfortable with it being half for special education?
I am not comfortable with any numbers, I have no idea what that, we could have a move-in that requires uh, of, no, but this is based on, so as you can see, we spent a fair amount last year.
Need. Yeah.
That i- is one particular case that was the bulk of that cost, that is no longer, we don't anticipate the need.
Yeah.
That being said, something else could come up and we, that could go up again, um, that was our rationale.
Hmm. Okay. Alright.
Page thirty-two, we budgeted one thousand seven hundred. Page thirty-two, we budgeted one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for rental lease equipment. So I mentioned the co- printer copier, um, lease agreement for the entire school. That's everything except for this one, this is the special education office. Page thirty-three, um, we budgeted six hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the aforementioned tuition accounts. So these are, um, this is the tuition that we are responsible for, for students who, um, attend an out of district placement at a school to meet specialized need. Like I said, as we discussed before with the NEC program, um, we, that that's one avenue to reduce this, um, this overall cost. Alright, page thirty-four, we budgeted one thousand dollars for travel reimbursement. Uh, this account is to reimburse, um, any of our staff members who may travel to attend a conference or workshop or maybe an out of district placement. They have meetings, um, to onsite visits, um, where we do reimburse those costs. Page thirty-five, we budgeted four thousand dollars for supplies. So these are specific to special education, um, so that could be, you know, visual motor support, specialized instruction materials. Any, any, um, special education specific supplies. Page thirty-six, we budgeted thirteen hundred dollars for, um, book print media. That is for, um, our special education books, um, for our, both our students and our staff. So you see, we've listed CPI training materials, that's actually for our staff to be be trained with CPI. Page thirty-seven, we budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars for equipment. Um, so we, um, expect the need to purchase some iPads, um, to support our language programs. Page thirty-eight, we budgeted seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars for dues and fees. So this account, um, provides funding for our professional organizations that are, um, that are, um, administrators and staff members are part of. Um, it also funds, um, Goalbook and, um, Pearson Dumbles, which are both, um, licenses. So that brings us to student activities.
Can I just ask a question while you're still in special education, Matt?
Absolutely.
Um, and I just wanna, I'm just, actually, it's not a question, um, just something to throw out there. Case managers, um, we have a lot of them. And looking at the enrollment, not every grade, but some grades. And wondered, um, just down the road looking if there needs to be anything, why we could not combine maybe for two really small, um, numbers. To one case manager or two instead of four. So I'm just throwing that out there. And that's nothing to, no decision.
So I would just say it's the number of case managers is not based on grade levels and, but it's based on needs of students. And so there are case managers, special education teachers, is the title I prefer to use. Um, they work across more than one grade level already, because the, where the services are delivered is based on the needs of the students.
I'll also note that, um, Christian.
So that's good that you share them across the grade levels, that's.
Right, it's where the need is, and I'll note that Christian puts a lot of work into, um, determining, um, our staffing levels. Um, what we do, what we do, or not we, what she does, is, um, looks at every IEP, the hours and services that are required. Because it's, it's not the number of students, it's the services that are required, right? So she looks at all those IEPs and what, what, what's, what the hours are necessary for every student that we have identified. And then it's a calculation of well, how many hours in a day? And you have to account for, you know, prep period, for, um, for special education meeting, IEP meetings.
Are services provided individually, are services provided in a group? Are they provided for thirty minutes, are they provided for an hour, are they provided one day a week, are they provided three times a week, five times a week? Like that's the whole analysis, so she goes through that for every individual student, for every individualized service.
And so it's essentially a formula to determine how many of those special education teachers we need, how many educational associates do we need, how many of our specialists do we need? And that's how we determine, um, our staffing levels that we propose in this budget. So it's not, it's not, it's not coming out of thin air, it's, it's based on, um, real data. And of course, that could change, and we've brought changes to you because student needs change.
Yeah.
You know, students move into districts, um, so that's that, it move out, so.
And that's more for elementary, because I believe I, and I, Maria didn't, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, because when we, we looked at the staff left, left, excuse me, this staff list. It's like case manager, fifth grade, case man, so there's a case manager for each grade, so I think that's probably where.
But even at the middle school level, they work across grade levels depending on the needs.
Okay. It's just that they're most likely to work within that grade level. Day to day and then.
Not always.
No?
No, to be sure.
They better be across grade levels. That's good.
Yeah, I didn't know that, so.
Yeah, I think that's what confuses us is when we see it.
They're not just by, you're just in sixth grade, no.
Right.
You might be in fifth grade, sixth grade.
Right.
You might service the students seventh grade.
Right, I think that's what's confusing is when it's labeled, like their position is labeled like grade six, that we think like they're just for grade six.
Oh, yeah.
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 At least in the middle school, I know the elementary is more fluid.
Yeah.
But, um.
No, we have a fifth grade case manager who's working fourth grade, so.
And you know what, I mean, that's, that's a good point, is that I can see where that confusion lies. I mean, maybe in the, we can adjust that chart to not, maybe just.
If it works, it works, it's just that, that's when, when you don't work in the school.
Yeah.
And you see that, that's what you automatically assume.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, in the budget, they're not listed by grade level.
Oh, I think they were last year, or they're all, or on the website, they are somewhere.
They were. Yeah, on the website, they do, yeah.
Yeah, they're somewhere.
They're somewhere, the primary tab we're particular.
Yeah, because that's, I thought the same thing that Maria did.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Alright.
So being shared.
So moving on to student activities, on page forty, we're budgeting sixty-four thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars for coaches and advisors salaries. So these are the, um, stipends for our, um, athletic coaches and our, our non-athletic, um, activities. This is part of the collective bargaining agreement, uh, that is, so those amounts are bargained for. Uh, we do have the extracurricular stipends committee that meets annually, um, that, and we need to, to look at these stipends and determine whether there should be any changes. What, whether it's, you know, maybe there's an activity that's not happening anymore, or we wanna add an activity. Um, but that's, um, that is our current, um, this is our current list, um, that is highlighted here. So page forty-two, we budgeted, we've kept a dollar in our speakers accounts, um, to, um, to keep this account open. This would be to bring in outside, um, speakers, um, for our, our students, or you could also do like an arts and residence program, those type of, um, opportunities. Uh, I, I believe the PTO has been very generous, um, you know, with assisting us on this line item. Um, so we hope that, um, you know, we hope that continues. I'm sorry?
I said, that's the point.
Fantastic. Page forty-three, we've budgeted a dollar for admissions, uh, so this would be, this is to keep the account open. Um, but this would be to fund, um, field trips. Um, I will note that, so we have overnight trips that require significant amount of fundraising. One future consideration would be for us to, to budget, to maybe supplement that cost. Um, we haven't included it here, um, but, you know, that is something that we would ideally would, would like to do at some point. Um, just for the board to consider in the future budget years.
Now, is this, is this what we're looking at right now? Is this on the SAU twenty-one website so that people can follow us and what we're talking about? Is this posted somewhere, um, on the agenda?
This is off, this is on Board docs right now.
So it can be? People out there in the gen- general public can see this?
Yeah, I think for this evening, it's under administrative contact tense, so the public can't see it.
Oh, okay, that's why.
However, once we finish, get through these documents, it'll be, it'll be shifted.
Why is it though, why can't they see it, because this is public information?
Yeah, absolutely, and it will be public as soon as we, we finish it, but we don't, we want you to be the first to see it, it's a, it's a working, such draft, so.
It's actually a draft as it's proposed to the board.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, but yes, this will, this will all be public, um, as soon as you finish the review. So, and obviously, it's being publicly displayed in a public meeting, um.
Right.
It's on the live stream too. So.
So.
So, yeah, so we'll, this will, I mean. I'll make sure that Ron typically does it just the next day, so, um, we'll ensure that happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, page forty-four, we've budgeted fifty-three hundred dollars, um, for supplies. So this would be supplies for our, um, DARE program, for our interact club, student council, National Junior Honor Society. Um, also, our playworks program, um, includes, um, some costs for T-shirts and then some general supplies that comes in peace. Page forty-five, we budgeted a thousand dollars for equipment. Um, so we would like to purchase, um, a soccer net and then, um, general sports equipment as needed, um, that, that come up through this year. Page forty-six, we budgeted ten thousand dollars for dues and fees. So this is to, to, um, the, to pay for our, um, officials, um, for our sporting events, so that'd be our umpires, our referees. You know, if we were, um, or we don't rent anything, so that, there's no rental fees here, but it's, so it's all the official costs. And that brings us to summer program. Page forty-eight, we've left a dollar in, um, our salary summer program to keep it open for future, um, for potential future use. This historically has been supplemented via Title I funding. That all, all federal funding, um, is, is uncertain at this point. Um, going forward, we, we expect it to be, to remain relatively flat for the ne- for the foreseeable future, but, um, that's, it's to be determined. Moving on to guidance, on page fifty, we budgeted a hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. That is for the salaries of our two guidance counselors. Moving on to health, we budgeted a hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and nine dollars for our two school nurses' salaries.
Can we go, um, back just for a second to the, the guidance counselor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just seeing a big difference in play here, so.
And that's based on where they fall on the salaries here.
Steps. Okay.
So you can see, it's actually noted on the right column. One is a thirteen M plus thirty, that means they have thirteen years of experience, have, have a master's degree, and then thirty additional graduate, um, credits. Um, eight M means eight years of experience with a master's degree and no additional credits. Alright, page fifty-three, we've left a dollar in salaries, um, for substitute nurses. So we have, we have guidance, um, subs in the past for our nurses. However, um, generally speaking, um, a best practice is, is oftentimes for, you know, the nurses to cover for each other when they're, they're out. Or the, the principal, um, can fulfill that, that role as well.
I love it. Nurse calling over there.
Or the.
We're gonna send her in doing mic checks that week.
Tim. Tim.
So lucky my mother was in the house.
Tim has a particularly nice bedside manner. Page fifty-four, we've budgeted seven hundred and nine, seven hundred and ninety dollars for employment exam. So every time we hire a new employee, um, we, we do, um, we do need to have a, um, physical exam conducted for seventy-nine dollars. Page fifty-five, we've budgeted thirty-two hundred dollars, um, for our nursing supplies. Um, so this would be, you know, bandages, bandages, um, our AED pads, so that's our, um, AED, the def- defibrillator. You know, hydrogen peroxide, all those items. That principals are very familiar with. Moving on to speech, on page fifty-seven, we've budgeted a hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars for our, um, certified staff, um, salaries. So this would be for our two, um, speech language pathologists, so SLPs. Page fifty-eight, we've budgeted thirty-nine thousand, we had three seven hundred and seventy-one dollars for our, um, speech language pathologist assistant salary. If you recall, last year when we budgeted, we had three SLPs, um, but based on student need, we reduced one SLP position and added an assistant position to cover, to cover the excess need. Uh, that's why there was zero dollars budgeted in, um, twenty-four, twenty-five, and now it jumped up. But you also see a corresponding decrease, there's two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, not corresponding, a significantly larger decrease, um, on the SLP account. So, moving on to other student support, page sixty, we're leaving a dollar open for, to keep the evaluations testing account open. And that brings us to improvement of instruction. Page sixty-two, we budgeted a hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars for our curriculum coordinator's salary. Page sixty-three, we budgeted ten thousand dollars for tuition reimbursement. So, um, per the CBA for our teachers, um, all of our teachers are entitled, um, to the ability, for the ability to take a, um, a college graduate course and be reimbursed up to the, um, UNH in-state, um, for credit tuition amount. So that doesn't mean they have to take a UNH course, but that's the, the amount that they're entitled to. Uh, obviously, if every teacher took a course, it'd be more than ten thousand dollars. We budget it based on teachers that we know are actively, you know, pursuing a degree or taking courses, um, it's not exact science, but like, you know, last year, we only spent, you know, fifty-five hundred dollars in this account. Page sixty-four, we budgeted eight thousand nine hundred dollars for testing. So this is, um, um, our, you know, our, um, progress monitoring, um, of subscri- subscription to NIWA, um, Acadiance, DIBLs. Um, and then we also pay for, um, PSATs for our eighth graders. Page sixty-five, we've budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for workshop seminars. So this is, um, so I, we, we had, we had a workshop seminars account earlier for special education. This account is for our general education teachers, um, to, again, take, a- attend conferences, workshops, um, seminars. Uh, we also received Title II A funding, um, you'll note at the bottom. Anytime we inti- we, we expect to use any sort of grant funding, you'll see that the bottom of these pages, we'll just make a note of what we expect. You know, if we're estimating the amount we'll receive and how we'll use it. Page sixty-six, we've budgeted six hundred dollars for, um, CESPA professional development. When I say CESPA, that is our, um, educational associates, um, union. Um, they are entitled to, um, to utilize up to a thousand dollars, um, for, um, again, for any sort of professional development. Um, historically, there hasn't been much, um, participation, um, in, in this, uh, in professional development from our EAs. Um, so we, we budget lower based on actual use. Page sixty-seven, we budgeted twelve hundred dollars for travel. Uh, so this again is for travel reimbursement, mileage reimbursement for our staff to attend, uh, workshops and conferences. Page sixty-eight, we budgeted six hundred dollars for book print media. Um, so this would be books that we purchased for our staff, so for, for professional development. That brings us to educational media. Page seventy, we budgeted two hundred and six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for our, um, media specialist salaries. So these are, um, you know, maybe elementary and the middle school libraries, these are our teachers that supports, um, both, both libraries. Page seventy-one, we budgeted but twenty-four hundred dollars for our library supplies. Page seventy-two, we budgeted twelve thousand eight hundred dollars for the book print media. So those are the actual books that we're purchasing for the respective libraries. That brings us to our technology account. Page seventy-four, we budgeted a hundred and two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for our, um, S- um, Seaborg Elementary Computer Teacher salary. Page seventy-five, we budgeted a hundred and three thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars for our, um, our com- our computer technician. And, um, I, I think we have to update that title, but it's, uh, it's our admin, our systems admin, systems admin. Dan, Dan, that's the, oh, sis- we had the title corrected in one spot, but it says information technologist up above, so. So, um, those are two very important positions, we wouldn't be doing this right now without Dan, that's for sure.
That's right.
Page seventy-six, we budgeted a dollar for workshop seminars. So that would be for any sort of professional development that our technology team was interested in. Dan doesn't have anything planned for next year, but we've, you know, he knows that if, if there is a need, that he can come to us for the request. Page seventy-seven, uh, we budgeted three thousand dollars for repair and maintenance of our computers. So that's, it's not the purchase of computers, but it's any repairs that are necessary for any, uh, technology equipment, not just computers, any technology. Page seventy-eight, we've budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars, um, for computer supplies, um, so that's really the accessories, if we have, have to purchase headphones, those type of items. Phone cords.
Wireless keyboards, nice.
Yes. Page seventy-nine, we budgeted thirteen thousand two hundred and four dollars for information access fees, so this is our internet, um, cost. Uh, I'll, I'll also note, you'll see that in, you know, last year we received almost five thousand dollars in E-Rates, um, reimbursement, that's, that's through the federal government. We did not budget to receive that reimbursement, um, because we don't expect E-Rate to be around next year, um, that could change, that is an uncertain item, hopefully it is, um, but we can't, we're not confident that it will be, so we didn't budget for that reduction. Page eighty, we budgeted ninety-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, um, for our software, um, licensing. So this, this, so it's a couple pages, um, that shows all of our software that we, um, we utilize, um, so both administration, so when you're looking at, you know, Power School, SNAP, um, you know, pick-up, control, those type of items. Um, but then also our curriculum, the software that we use to support our curriculum, um, so you know, that would be, you know, CSO, um, IXL, you know, you know, you can see the list. Page eighty-two, we budgeted thirty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for our technology equipment, so this is where we purchase, um, our actual hardware. Um, we have our Chromebook replacement cycle as well as, um, our smart board, um, purchases, um, you know, we have some access points um, and, and monitors that we need to purchase. That brings.
How often do you do the Chromebooks? Is that every year, is that every few years, or?
Yeah, we do a grade level every year.
Grade level.
Am I misspeaking right then?
That's correct.
Alright, moving on to support services. Page eighty-four, we budgeted eighty-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars for contracted services, so the bulk of this is our, um, our school resource officer, so our SRO is a Seabrook Police Department employee, um, and we reimburse Seabrook PD, um, for, um, for those services. Uh, additionally, we, um, we have our student assistance program, five oh four consultation services, and a language translator. That brings us to board of education, page eighty-six, we budgeted thirty-three thousand ninety-seven dollars for our district officer salaries, so these are our elected officials, that includes the school board, but also our treasurer, our school district clerk, and our moderator. Uh, we do, um, we do provide the, um, our SAU Y non-union cost of living adjustment to these positions as well, also in this case, this year is three point two percent.
Can I ask a question right there, I know, um, the school board definitely worked their while with their meetings, but I am suggesting that the school board, um, does not take that three point two percent increase, um, this year to really make a point of how much we want the budget to pass that. We don't need to get a raise. So, just putting it out there for the board.
I'm fine with that.
It's not that much, but it's something to kind of make a statement.
Yep.
So, if, at any point, any board member can make, make a motion, um, I don't have that number off, off my head, um, but we could, you could certainly make a motion to, just, just like you said, like, not, not take the thirty-three point two percent, and, and then I can get, I can calculate the exact number.
Do you want to make that motion, Maria? Oh, yeah, we're sure.
Can we go, come back to it in a minute, we'll see if it's back.
Yeah, sure.
So I can look at the board's budget.
It's not a lot, but it's something.
Yeah.
So, by the, um, I mean, we'll, we'll likely have a, another meeting depending on how you want to proceed, but if, if we, if we want to finish, or if we can finish tonight, I will, I will, I can easily get that number out, so you can vote on a number.
Maybe not, no. Lacy's right here.
What's up?
We, um, talked about level funding the school board, um, stipend instead of taking the three point two increase.
It included cost of living for, as part of the non-union workers to, the school board.
They were given us the.
So we're just proposing ignoring that cost of living, which is.
Oh, yeah, definitely do it back to level.
The school board, but only the, the school board members right now, the treasurer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right, just, uh, so level fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, it's not much, Lacy, but.
We wanted to do it for you before we made a motion.
Oh, I appreciate that, but yeah, I know that. Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, make a motion to level fund the school board, step.
I'll, I'll second.
For twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year?
Yes.
Okay, that was a motion by Maria, did you get that?
Yep, and I seconded.
And Lacy seconded, all in favor?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Page eighty-seven, um, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars, um, for our legal account, um, so that's an increase, um, we budgeted eight thousand dollars last year, but as, as you can see, we spent seventy thousand dollars, um, in legal fees last year. We, those costs seem to be coming down, trending downward, um, so we, we didn't, we're not suggesting we budget seventy thousand dollars, but we are spending more than, um, than we have in previous years.
Is that legal fees for the board?
Wait, timeout.
What?
That's wild.
Mm-hmm.
That's wild. What is expended, um, thus far, do you, do you have that?
We have a date that's in your revenue report, I mean, your expenditure report, we didn't get it up. I think we were close to the eight thousand already, as I recall.
So I can certainly grab it, if you give me one moment.
Thank you.
So, we s- have spent, um, eleven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars currently, um, as of November eighth, so, about a week, a little over a week ago.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've had some, a few issues that we've had, we, we had, we had down in choice.
We have another fifty-nine hundred encumbered, just so you know, I'm, I'm not certain if that's a blanket PO or if it's an actual, looks like it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, page eighty-eight, we budgeted thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, for our audit, so this is, um, what we pay Plazek and Sanderson to provide their third-party independent audit. Um, as you know, they come on site, they review all of our financials, all of our controls, our policies, they take enough interviews, and then they, they, um, deliver a annual financial, um, report. Page eighty-nine, we budgeted seventeen hundred dollars for our annual meetings, so this is primarily, um, to print, um, our ballots, um, but, but also to pay the, uh, the annual meeting workers. Page ninety, we've budgeted six hundred and fifty dollars for postage, so this would be, um, this is, this is, could be mailings that the school board sent out, but the board hasn't sent any mailings out in the recent history, um, it's, so this is primarily the treasurer, um, they, their mailings. Page ninety-one, we budgeted two hundred and fifty dollars for advertising, um, so we do need to post, um, or we do post for, for big, to hire, so for vacancies, but also any public hearing that we have, we have to post in the local newspaper. Page ninety-two, we budgeted four thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for dues and fees, so this is our, um, New Hampshire School Boards Association membership fee. Page ninety-three, we budgeted a thousand dollars for other expenses, so this is to pay for any like retirement gifts, um, recognition awards, um, those type of miscellaneous costs. That brings us to SAU services, page ninety-five, we budgeted six hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars for, um, SAU services, that's Seabrook's portion of the SAU, um, overall budget, um, it's a, it's a formula based on enrollments and property valuation.
Can I, I have a question on that, does six hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-four is the proposal for our twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh? The budgeted for last year was six fifty-six oh ninety-seven, can you, um, do you have the breakdown of one hundred, the actual cost to Seabrook as well?
I, I don't, um, but it's.
Cause I ask for that every single year and I can't get it.
Like, a- anytime you ask for it, I give it to you.
Yeah, the break, well, at our budget things, we never have it in there, cause it's important, because people do ask, okay, is that what we pay for the total, no, it isn't, so.
I can, anytime that you ask, I will certainly provide it to you, um, it's roughly three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Huh?
But it's roughly three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, but I'll get you the exact.
No, that's okay, that's good, Matt, um, and I, I just, I bring this up because we did have the withdrawal, um, on the ballot, and everybody, you know, said, oh, the cost, the cost, the cost, keep in mind, as we sit here right now, we're looking at a, for almost like forty-two thousand dollar increase over last year, administration proposal. So I just want to put that out there to everybody, it's going up, even though we are still serviced by the SAU. So.
Yeah, that's, that reflects the rate of inflation.
What, what is the, when you say that, um, the three point two?
Well, I mean, just like, it's just like all of our costs across the board is, um, you know, the cost increase.
The Seabrook is, if you look at, and I think it's important too, if you look at what everybody else is paying, well, at least for the administrative, coming this year, Hampton Falls is one seven, one hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three, North Hampton's three hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and seventeen, Seabrook is six hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine seventy-four, South Hampton's seventy-eight thousand nine hundred. And I say that, and I understand it's the accessing and all that stuff, the valuations all play into it, but I just, I want people to hear those numbers. And, you know what I want, I want Seabrook to get what they should be getting out of that for education like everybody else, so, just want to bring that out.
Thank you, page ninety-seven, we budgeted five hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, um, for our administrator salaries, so this is for, um, our, um, two principals, um, one at the elementary, one at the middle school, as well as our assistant principals at each school. Page ninety-eight, we budgeted two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars for our administrative assistants salaries, um, that includes two at the elementary and two at the middle school. Um, I will note that we are.
Can I, Matt, can we go back just for a second?
Yep.
Um, to the administration, um, so the budgeted twenty-five, twenty-six was two thirty-six for elementary, it's increased by, I don't know what.
About a hundred thousand.
If you roughly ten thousand dollars, middle school, um, same thing, ten thousand dollar increase, and that is, um, is that still within the three point two percent, just like everybody else?
So the cost of living adjustment for all non-union employees was three point two percent, correct?
Yeah.
Alright, page ninety-nine, we've budgeted four thousand dollars for workshop seminars, so that is for our, um, our, um, staff to attend, our administrators to attend, um, conferences, workshops, seminars, so we have, we've already had one for special education, PD, um, professional development for our general education student, uh, teacher, or staff, and then this is for our administrators. Page one hundred, we budgeted eighteen hundred dollars, um, for our, um, telephone accounts. This, we have some school-owned cell phones and facilities department. Page one oh one, we budgeted eighteen hundred dollars, um, for the cost of post, postage, to send out, um, mailers and letters. You know what, I, I neglected to mention one item, back when Maria had that question, um, on the salaries clerical, um, we are adding, um, five additional days to two of our administrative assistants, um, contracts, um, that is for the residency verification, um, to be conducted prior to the school year.
Why do we need to add more time for that though, because to me, that was a great, that was a big impact this year, and it went, and I think things have really come well, I don't think we're in that position that we were, were in this year. And we faced it with a default budget.
It was an incredible amount of work. It was an incredible amount of work.
Yeah, but it's down.
For those, well, yeah, but we're gonna do it every year, or.
Yeah, but it will never be what it was this year, so I'm just throwing that out there, we don't always, you know, we say it.
I, I stayed in the town and seeing town hall people coming in and asking for help, it was inundated, just to see them go to town clerk or verify, and call me to verify addresses or call and assessing, like, there was a, a lot, and I couldn't imagine being the secretary that had to handle that, and then chase people, and chase people.
Well, we didn't, we have never done it, so this was the first year, so it was overwhelming, I'm sure, for everybody,
Right.
but I don't think it will be the impact it was this year again, cause we're, we're on track, I mean.
Well, we have done it, but it's been done once, when students register, um, so if the intent is to verify on an annual basis, it does take additional time.
Well, enrollment's down, so I don't know how much we're gonna have of that.
Well, it's down twenty students from the current year, so it took a considerable amount of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it took a lot to work, I mean, the deadline was like, when was the first deadline?
And. So this is what we're expecting, the amount of time to take, now, that doesn't, we, we may be off, cause we're, we're, we're forecasting that, that this is what's gonna take.
Hmm.
If, for whatever reason, it's, it's, it takes less time, they're, they will be paid on a per, on as need, so we've budgeted five days, but they're gonna submit special payment forms for what the time they actually need is, so if it only takes two days or three days, they'll only be paid for that amount.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then we'll budget accordingly going forward, when we have a kind of a better idea of what the actual need is, but this is based on what, what we expect, based on what happened this past year, and we do think that it will be, there will be less of a, of a need, but there's still gonna be work that's required.
Last year. Yeah.
I hope so.
It's something that definitely needed to be done, and I'm glad that it was.
Alright, so, sorry, I jumped back there, um, page one oh two, we've budgeted four hundred dollars for travel, so this is reimbursement for our administrators to attend workshops and seminars. Page one oh three, we budgeted twenty-two hundred dollars for supplies, so this is our, you know, general office supplies and then our administrative offices. Page one oh four, we budgeted five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars for dues and fees, these are the, um, our membership and, uh, national professional organization dues that, um, we're part of. Um, it also includes, um, our, the cost for our shredding with iron burning. That brings us to buildings, page one oh six, we budgeted ninety-one thousand thirty dollars for our facilities director's salary. Page one oh seven, we budgeted thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars for our, um, administrative assistants, um, in the facilities departments.
Can I ask a question about that position, cause this came up like the last couple of years, on the need, um, for that position. I know when you look a lot, you might see, you know, different people fill in for other coverage that's needed with the office and things, but I just, I question why this is, um, on here still part-time, so the administration does. So the administration doesn't feel that it needs to move any further than that, and I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, this is based on the, the need for the, um, for the departments. Um, you know, we work with, you know, our principals and facilities director to, um, to determine what, what this position is responsible for. Um, and, um, we feel that this is, um, is the, is the right amount of time. Page one oh eight, we budgeted four hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and thirty two dollars for our custodial staff salaries. Uh, so this includes both our, um, night custodians, our, um, day custodians and maintenance mechanic. Page one oh nine, we budgeted three thousand dollars, um, for our custodial substitutes. Page one ten, we budgeted three thousand dollars, um, for overtime. So if we end up paying overtime for any of our, uh, facilities team, this oftentimes happens if we have like a, a snowstorm. And they need to come in for snow removal. Or if there's, um, coverage, if, if an employee's covering for someone who's out, they may have overtime. Page one eleven, we've left a dollar in consultants, um, to keep the account open. Um, so this is, um, this would be if we needed to hire consultants for any, you know, capital, um, you know, capital improvements. You know, like an architect.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as you recall, we had, um, like two years ago, we had budgeted for a consultant to take a look at, um, redesigning our courtyard, um, space. Um, that's something, actually, that's a future consideration, um, here, that's something that we would like to do. Um, but due to fiscal constraints, we didn't include it in the budget. But, um, you know, that is, uh, that is on the C I P down the road, and we, we would like to address it at some point. Um, page one twelve, we budgeted sixteen thousand dollars, um, for water. So this is the domestic water, um, costs. Page one thirteen, we budgeted fifty nine hundred dollars for trash removal.
Did they wanna increase that?
Yeah, it's going up, I think, I don't know how much.
Well, they expended twenty seven thousand.
Yeah.
Last year.
So, um.
But we might wanna ask it to be forgiven, cause it's for the school. Our, precious to do that. It's like, why are we paying that? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's pretty typical for schools to pay the, uh, for water, so I don't think we'll be.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice though?
It would be nice, um.
You hearing that out there?
We also pay for trash removal.
Yeah, that's just like me.
Um.
Just trying.
We, we, we budgeted fifty nine hundred dollars for trash removal, um, that's, uh, for a dumpster, um. We, we bring, so we don't get pickup, uh, we, we load our pickup truck and bring it to the, um, to be, be disposed.
Yeah.
Um, at one point, we, we were part of the pickup, um, so.
I know. I don't know what happened with that, but we were.
Well, that's another question you can ask.
No, they're listening, you're listening out there?
Oh.
Cause it's a huge audience, listen.
Oh, they're listening.
Page one fourteen, we budgeted fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, um, for fire safety protection. So these are our, um, you know, fire extinguisher, um, you know, we have to test, we have to maintain. We also have to replace every few years. There's also our, like, sprinkler flow tests, um, we have, um, asbestos. So there's a number of areas that, you know, we need some annual inspections and maintenance. Page one fifteen, we budgeted sixty five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for repair and maintenance services. So this would be other, um, inspections, um, throughout this, the, oops, um, the school. Um, specifically our boilers, our H V A C. Um, we, um, we resurface our gyms, um, we have to have bleacher inspections. Um, and then general repairs, you'll see the last line item, um, which is the largest, that forty two thousand dollars. That's for general, like, so if we have any electrical work, any plumbing work, um, you know, heat, A C, those type of things. Page one sixteen, we budgeted sixty two thousand five hundred and forty seven dollars. Um, this is our, um, property and liability insurance premium. Page one seventeen, we budgeted fifty two thousand five hundred dollars, um, for our facility supplies. So I, I mentioned before, like, we, we've seen some big increases in facilities costs, um, with, with inflation. Um, but that, that includes all of our, you know, cleaning supplies, our wax, our stripper, our cleaner, our paper goods. Um, you know, we have, uh, uniform allowance. Page one eighteen, we budgeted a hundred and twenty four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, um, for electricity. Page one nineteen, we budgeted sixty two thousand eight hundred and eighty one dollars, uh, for our natural gas. Um, I will note, um, both those accounts, we, um, we, um, aggregate at the S A U. And we do a, an S A U wide, um, bid, um, and really, um, get to enjoy economies of scale, get some really good rates, uh, for both natural gas and electricity. So that's, um, you know, that's, that's a positive, um, savings there. You'll see electricity is actually, we expect to spend less next year than we did in twenty five. Page one twenty, we've left a dollar in renovations to keep the account open. Now, there are some renovations that we would like to do, that we've put as a future consideration. Um, but due to fiscal constraints, this, in this budget cycle, we, we've not included. Um, that includes adding, um, a staff bathroom in the elementary school, um, adding two student bathrooms. Um, and then adding doors to our, um, middle school locker rooms.
Can I ask a question though?
No.
I don't know if you've ever.
Of course you can.
I don't know if you've ever used the bathroom up front of the office. But I don't know how they use it, that, that toilet is like almost on the floor. So I'm not necessarily to overhaul everything, but I mean, a, a toilet, you know what I mean? It's really, I, I don't know how they use it, but.
The elementary school office bathroom is the same, you know, design for, um, yeah.
Oh my goodness, children. I don't know who decided that, but wow. But, just saying.
Alright, page one twenty one, we budgeted twelve thousand four hundred dollars, um, for new furniture. So we, we, last year, we started a, a replacement cycle for furniture. We do have some very, um, dated furniture that do need to be replaced. So we're slowly addressing that issue, um, on an annual basis. Page one twenty two, we budgeted seventy three hundred dollars, um, for equipment. Um, so that includes vacuum cleaner, cleaners, that's, uh, you know, auto scrubber batteries, radio replacements. Um, I'll note that the radio replacements, we, is typically an annual cost, but we're not budgeting for any, um, this year. Because we, we, um, there is a new round of safe grants available. So we will be, or we actually are in the process of applying for those safe grants. And we're hopeful to, um, to get, be ready to do that grant. Page one twenty three, we've left a dollar in training, keep the account open. Um, that moves us on to grounds. Page one twenty five, we budgeted forty thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars for snow removal. Page one twenty six, we've budgeted twenty thousand dollars, six hundred dollar, twenty thousand six hundred dollars for grounds and maintenance. So, um, that is a bit of an increase. That is, um, the reason for that increase, well, some of it's just cost escalation. Um, but the, um, but we do have some significant, um, asphalt's, um, repairs that are necessary on both our, um, our parking lot and sidewalks. Uh, so that's the, the, um, both of the increases.
Mm-hmm, um, question on snow removal, um, when is the last time that we actually went out to bid to see if we could get the, a better price? For, uh, was it like eight years ago? I don't know.
Um, no, I think it was, it may have been two years ago or last year.
Two?
Recently, yeah.
No. Wait, really?
Yeah.
Huh.
So we, we typically do a five-year contract, so I imagine certainly verify the exact, um, date.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cause if we could save money there by somebody's bid, you know, I was just throwing it out there.
I'd always like to save money, so.
Hmm. Just an idea.
Alright, page one twenty seven, we budgeted seven thousand dollars, um, for our grounds supply. So that includes, um, you know, playing field supplies, so long seed, infield mix, um, ice melts. Um, and then some, um, mulch and, and sand and stone for our playground. That brings us to vehicle expenses. Page one twenty nine, we budgeted thirty two hundred dollars. Um, this is, um, to maintain our, um, three vehicles. Um, so that includes, um, any repairs and maintenance, but also the fuel, any oil changes and inspections. Page one thirty one, we budgeted seven hundred and forty two thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars for our transportation contract. This is our contract with first student to provide general education, um, transportation. As you know, we, we do look at our routes, um, on an annual basis and, and determine whether there's any efficiencies. We, we have made, like, two and a half routes have been reduced over the last two years. Um, and that's something we will continue to monitor and, um, that we, the, the route analysis showed that there's, there, we can't make reduction next year. But maybe the following year, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look every year, obviously.
I know where, where, you know, where the numbers are down too, that's, to me, we should be looking at that.
Yeah, no, we, we, we absolutely, we, we, we are.
And a lot of people honestly drive tickets to school.
Yeah.
It's, I, it's amazing how many people drive and pick up. It's, some of the buses look really full, and then other ones look like there's not even anybody on them. So, it's a nice place to visit.
So page, so page one thirty two, we budgeted five hundred and ninety three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for our special education transportation. So these, this is the, um, transportation cost for our students that are out of district, attending a s- school. Um, it's also our in-district transportation and our preschool transportation.
And it's projected to be, um, over two hundred thousand dollars more.
Yeah, so the, this is that, one of those, if you recall that first, um, one of the, the slides I included. One of the four biggest drivers, um, is special education transportation, which is a very large increase.
Yeah.
It's a, essentially a quarter of the total increase.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, these are, unfortunately, it's, it's, uh, these are necessary costs, um, in order to service these, these students, um, that require specialized transportation.
At what point does buying buses become cheaper?
I'm sorry?
It's expensive, it's at what point does buying buses become cheaper then?
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that's not, it, that, that's, that's a reasonable question. Um, the, I mean, the, the issue is, if you were to own your own fleet, and then, um, you have to purchase the buses. But then also, you know, you'll, you're responsible for, you know, hiring all the, the drivers and paying the drivers. And hiring a mechanic to service the, the, the buses, their dispatcher, a manager of the transportation, um, somewhere to store them. So, uh, like a bus yard of some sort. Um, then you, then you also come into the question of scale. So it's more, you can, you can benefit more larger scale, right? But seeing as how we're separate districts, it would only, maybe, I mean, I, I don't think there's an R O I regardless. But the only way it would make sense if we got all the districts to do it together. Um, but, so it's, it's, we, we absolutely look at those, those type of solutions, cause I, you know. You know, where does it make sense to do things in-house versus contracting it out? Um, in this case, I don't think there's an R O I, but it's, those are the type of questions that we, we, we should be asking and we do look at.
Um, just a quick question, so in your breakdown here, um, it's, it's showing, you know, we use two buses for specialized transportation, for I E Ps. How many children are on those two buses? Do we know?
Yeah, that's my question too, cause preschool, I know we had to pick up my grandchildren at preschool, but there was only certain kids on the bus.
Right.
But what determines that?
Well, I know, uh, preschool is preschool, but with, per I E Ps, and it says two buses, I just didn't know how many kids were, we were, um, transporting via those two buses.
So I believe the bus capacity is twelve to fourteen students. Um, I was on a, just did a ride last week, uh, with, uh, eight very, very, uh, active kiddos. Um, so it is, uh, they're not completely full, but it is nice to have room to separate students, so that we don't need to add an additional bus.
So you have roughly eight children on each bus?
Uh, just on the one that I wrote, each bus can hold twelve to fourteen, so.
Okay.
And that's the middle school, that's fine?
Uh, they, alright.
They're, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yep.
And then the summer transportation, that's not covered by our Title I funds?
No, so the Title I funds would be for the, um, general education summer program. This is for E S Y specific to, so send this school year for special education.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Page one thirty three, we budgeted eighty seven hundred dollars for our athletic transportation. Page one thirty four, we budgeted eight thousand dollars.
Excuse the interruption, Bruce, can you call two two nine, Bruce, two two nine, thank you.
I thought they were gonna say you can adjourn your meeting now. Go home.
Uh, so we budgeted eight thousand dollars for our field trip transportation. Um, page one thirty five, we budgeted forty thousand dollars for our other transportation. So this is, um, um, for our McKinney Vento transportation. So that's, um, students who are homeless or in foster care, um, and our summer school transportation.
So that didn't go down with all the, the revamping and checking that we did? That didn't change that at all, the transportation? But just six thousand dollars?
Right.
The number of kids didn't change for that?
I don't know our current number of McKinney Vento eligible students, but we can get you that information.
Just kee- just asking, cause I know that guys worked on us and wondering if you saw some decrease. Thank you.
Alright, now we move to employee benefits. Page one thirty seven, we budgeted two million one hundred and forty two thousand four hundred and forty nine dollars. Um, this is our health insurance, um, premium rate.
Call seven one oh nine, call seven one oh nine.
Page one thirty eight, we budgeted sixty five thousand five hundred and sixty eight dollars for our dental insurance premium. Page one thirty nine, we budgeted ten thousand two hundred and sixty eight dollars for our group life insurance premium. Page one forty, we budgeted thirty six thousand eight hundred and eighty six dollars for our long-term disability insurance premium. Page one forty one, we budgeted seven hundred and fifty six thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars, uh, for employer's contribution to F I C A. Page one forty two, we budgeted one million five hundred and ninety two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for our employer contribution to the New Hampshire retirement system. Page one forty three, we budgeted six thousand five hundred and ninety two dollars for our unemployment insurance premium. Page one forty four, we budgeted eighty two thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars for our workers' compensation insurance premium. Page one forty five, we budgeted six thousand dollars for four three B contribution. So that's, um, a four three B match for our administrators, um, who are el- eligible via their contract. Page one forty six, we budgeted nineteen hundred dollars for dues and fees. So this is the administrative fee to administer our, um, F S A. So that's the flexible spending account, as well as our H S A, the health savings account. And that brings us to debt service. Page one forty eight, we, um, we have zero budgeted for our, um, principal payment. Um, our bond has, uh, last, twenty four, twenty five was our last, uh, year of that bond. Um, same for the interest payments, um, we are, that bond has. Um, same for the interest payments, um, we are, that bond has been fully paid.
Matt, just a quick question, you, you, I love that you're moving along, but on the, um, insurance plan, just for the general public out there, what is the, um, you know, what do they pay, like twenty, eighty, twenty five, seventy five?
So for health insurance?
Yeah.
Um, so it's different by, um, employee classification and by plan.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's all on the S A website, but, um, non-union, it's, um, eighty percent, um, employer, twenty percent employee. Um, for CESPAs, or, I'm sorry, Educational Associates, it's also eighty, twenty. Um, for our, um, teachers, it's, um, there are three different plans with three different, um, contribution rates. Um, I think the SOS is ninety five five, I believe the Luminos is seventy nine, twenty one. You know what, I can pull up.
No, if, if it's not exact, I'm okay, but the, um, I know back in the day, um, that we really worked hard on, you know, having that, um, ninety five five not be so used or kind of phased out as we go along.
Well, that's actually the one, that's a, that's a driver, um, we want people to take that health insurance, cause that's the cheapest.
It's the cheapest?
So it's actually, even paying ninety five is much less than paying eighty percent on another.
Is still cheaper? Okay. Yeah, so it's not the J Y that I was thinking, yeah.
We did, we did get rid of a plan that was kind of the Cadillac, like, a few years ago.
Yes, that, yeah.
Um, but health insurance is, um, certainly expensive, um, for everyone.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pulling it up right now, I'm gonna tell you exactly.
But they're paying, you know what I mean, I just want people out there to know that they're, they're paying the percentage, yeah.
It's roughly eighty, twenty for everyone, but I'm gonna give you the exact numbers.
Yeah. Okay.
Just, just, so everyone has to correct their information. The internet's slow, geez, maybe we should increase that, uh.
You can get up if you want after.
It's my computer, I think. Alright, so, um, so for, just so you know, for dental, it's a one-person plan, the employee, but, um, the employer pays seventy five percent. For two-person and family plan, it's fifty and fifty, so fifty percent. For health insurance, Luminos is eighty nine percent, the HMO is seventy nine percent, and the SOS is ninety six percent.
Yeah, thank you.
And then it's eighty, twenty for, um, like I said, for non-union and for CESPAs.
Okay.
So that brings us to the interfund transfer, page one fifty one, um, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars. So, we actually, all the accounts that we just went through constitute the general fund. General fund is the school operations, right, with all the, all the accounts that fund school operations. Then we have a food service fund, which is separate from the general fund because it receives revenue. We, it receives revenue via the National School Lunch Program, we get USDA reimbursement for free and reduced, um, lunches. Um, we also receive revenue from students and staff paying for lunch. So, um, I, in an ideal world, the, um, the food service program would, would break even or make a profit. Um, however, last year, we, we experienced a, a significant, um, loss, um, and that's due to, um, lower participation, cause there's less students, um, and, and it's a lower reimbursement, um, through USDA for free and reduced food to students. Um, so, we have budgeted twenty thousand dollars, um, to, um, fund any deficit that we may have in the food service program. That's coming from the general fund paying the food service fund. As you can see, we lost, it was fifty nine thousand dollars last year, um, and that includes a surplus that we already had, so it was even higher than that. Alright, page one fifty.
I think, um, what page do you want?
I'm on page one fifty three.
Okay, keep going, yeah, sorry.
Um, so we budgeted eighty four thousand three hundred and fifty four dollars for our, um, school nutrition director's salary. Page one fifty four, we budgeted a hundred and forty one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for our food service worker salaries. Uh, so these are our, these salaries for our, our food service staff. Um, I will note that there is a proposed reduction, um, of one five and a half hour position to three point two five hours, um, position. So, um, again, this is where, you know, we've, we've seen a reduction in enrollment and participation, um, and we take a look at our staffing needs and has determined that, um, that, um, we could reduce, um, one of these positions.
How is it determined, um, for the personnel? Like, how long have some of these workers been there?
So, um, I'm not certain how long each, and we can certainly find out, like, how long each employee's been there. However, I mean, these are non-union, um, employee at will, so tenure is, is a, um, part of the equation. Um, it's more about the role and what's, um, you know, what is, what is needed, right? So what, what was the position that, that there was less need for, um, that was what was reduced? So was, it's not about the, like, years of service or, um, you know.
But it could be, and I, that's where I say, look at the difference, I mean, if you have a five-year versus twenty-four, eighty-nine, um, and then you have six and eight years, I mean, twenty dollars and fifty-six cents, they're a lot less. Some, some don't drag right here with me, okay?
Well, the position being re- proposed for reduction is a school nutrition one.
So it would, so it would only be the SN, so the third and fourth line, um, those are the two, those are the two people that it could be. Um, but it's, I, there's, you know, when we, when you look at the actual staffing, it's based on the, you know, the, the actual, um, they, they, they do different, they have different roles, so different.
But I can see people that have been here a very long time on this, and that step, not so long, is just boom, surpassed by four dollars an hour, I don't, that, I.
Those are different salary schedules for different positions. So there's the SN one, SN two, and SN three, so those are different jobs. So, if, so the position, so the, the, the role is an SN one, and then there's a specific responsibilities that are different for those two positions. And then, and then you look, and then you, of course, with any reduction, you look at, you know, um, you know, evaluations and performance and, um, but ul- but ultimately is what, what the role does, that's, that was the reason, and that, that was.
Well, we have a worker that we could have here for, say, twenty thousand to twenty-nine thousand. We have one here for forty thousand.
That's a forty.
And I know there's a role difference, but is that necessary? And I think that's where we need to look, do we need to be paying one out of the seven? Cause there's not many of them, um, the six workers, that amount of money when we have a director. Um, I think we should look at that, I think we should really take a look at.
Well, we look at staffing every year, that's why we're making this proposal for a reduction. Um, the one, the position that makes the most is, is the sh- the chef.
But why do we need a chef at Seabrook School?
We need someone to, to cook.
We have a director that used to do that, why, why are we using a chef?
That's, that's the, that's the.
Well, I think it's something the board needs to discuss, cause it, I mean, we're looking to be fair to the community and taxpayers. If I could, if I thought we could hire two people to help those lunch people, cause they work hard, remember, they feed every kid in this building how many times a day, um, I wanna look at that, cause I don't think Seabrook School, and I'm not, I mean, I don't look at the menu and see that we have this extravagant, uh, chef menu. So why are we paying forty thousand versus twenty-some odd thousand a year? And if we can make a difference in that as a board, I think we need to do that tonight, in front of us.
So you'd like to, to increase the, the staff there?
No, I'm looking at the, the price that we're paying, and I'm looking at everybody else and what they're making and saying, hey, wait a minute, that's double.
So I'm not sure we.
Because there are different descriptions for the different responsibilities.
Yeah, but do we need a chef at Seabrook School is the question.
I, I think the part, the answer is yes.
Okay, but as a board member, I don't think we do, so that's, and tonight's the night to discuss.
Well, the board, the board can certainly make that decision.
Uh, discuss, anyways.
And it'll be very difficult to operate a food service program without a chef, but.
Every school district has a chef?
Yep.
And a director?
Well.
Wow.
So, not really for.
There're di- different numbers of students.
Because Ash, our director used to be our chef, you know what I mean, so to speak, so I, I don't know how we got that.
So in ten years I've been here, there's always been.
Right, well, that was ten years, and now I'm, I'm here.
So I'm, I'm not certain, I can't speak, I can't speak to you, to your experience, but typically a school this size has, you know, was.
Just looking for areas. A school this size, a moment's gone down.
But your percentage of students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, which requires a great deal of paperwork on behalf of the director, um, in addition to the participation in the federal meal program, well, you're at about fifty percent right now.
Always have. Always have, we've always been like forty to fifty, so I don't buy that, I, I really question the need for a chef pay for our school when the other, the other workers are making half that amount of money, and I'm sure we're getting just as much work from them, if not more. Just saying.
Uh, happy to, for the board to discuss that, I would think before you make a decision, you'd wanna look at job responsibilities.
Nobody's making decisions, we're putting it out there, that's, that's what tonight is, right, that we discuss the budget.
Yeah, uh, and I'm suggesting that if, if this is an area you wanna revisit, that reviewing job descriptions would be an important piece of that.
Mm-hmm.
There's also a differential in the amount of hours that individual works each day.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I would like more information on that, is, and then, like, what the director.
Does.
Yeah, what the director does.
And I'm not just throwing it out there, cause I've been a sub in that, um, cafeteria, so I know exactly what they do. I'm, I mean, we all know people for years that worked in there, and they had a director that was the chef with her people, or his people, so I don't know why, and if, what the need is, but I, I would like to hear about it.
So, and last year, we had a lot of, there was a lot of, um, debt that wasn't paid.
Yeah, what happened to that?
So who, who, is that the director's position, or?
Um, what's?
There's a lot of kids that owed money.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand dollars, I, yeah, kids.
Yeah.
And that's, that's gonna continue, because that's, there's no, there's no real mechanism for us to collect that, those funds.
You didn't collect any of that fifteen thousand from people that?
No, we, we, we collected, we obviously collected funds, but there's always gonna be a deficit because there's no, there's no real, we have, we have no ability to collect, there's.
Yeah, but there's one role that were capable of paying that were not paying, they were missed, however, through the system, like Michelle saying, how, who was responsible for that, how did we miss that, and can we look back?
We didn't miss, we didn't miss anything, we send.
You didn't?
We, we send, um, weekly, um, email reminders, letters in the mail, phone call collections. But if someone does, if a family doesn't wanna pay, then we have no recourse other than telling them that, right?
You have no recourse.
So what did you do, we didn't, the families did not pay any of that?
I think we got some donations.
Oh, families did pay, plenty of families paid, but.
Can you give me a figure, not right now, about how much was actually recouped from that fifteen thousand? Cause I was told it was a computer glitch, that people were not billed and they were having six hundred dollar bills pop up that they didn't know they had, um.
We discussed that last winter, and that was addressed and corrected.
Right, it was an email that went to spam or something, yeah.
Yeah, and then we had, yeah, then we had donations that we never actually got the donations, I don't think, it was kind of a, they were, did they donate toward it, or?
I believe the board accepted.
Yeah, we did get donations.
Yeah.
So the Legion and the Lions, um, we did get those and used them toward the, um, to reduce it. You don't have to answer tonight, it's okay.
But I, I mean, or you, it's not like you're gonna take the kids' lunch away, we can't, I, I mean, I wanna, I just hear what is going on.
No, legally we can't, that's what I'm saying.
No, I mean, I think they should all get free lunch, you know?
Well, yeah, but.
Alright, let's do it.
But that's, there's parent responsibility too, so like, I, I have three kids that eat here, so I set it up so if it goes below a certain amount, on the account that you pay it, I get a notification that it's below a certain amount, so,
Mm-hmm.
parents need to also be accountable to check the balance, make sure they know how much money their kid is spending, make sure they're paying what their kid is spending.
Right.
And that's, I mean, the school can only do so much about that, we need to be reminding people to utilize the tools available to them to make sure that they know what's going on and what the expenditures are, and then they're having these conversations with their kid, like, hey, you're eating breakfast at home, you shouldn't be getting breakfast at school, or, you know, are you getting hot lunch three days this week or five days this week?
So I take it off the kid, cause if a kid comes up to the lunch counter, they're gonna be fat. I put it on the parents that know that they have two or three kids in the school and they haven't paid a bill toward the lunch for, uh, six months. There's gotta be some accountability there on the part of saying, wait a minute, we haven't paid. And I'm not saying we can't pay, but I certainly think the taxpayers would not wanna think that there are people out there making probably two hundred thousand dollars a year or more and they're not paying their lunch bill to the school, and we're just kinda letting it go. No, kids should not be refused lunch, but parents that can afford to pay should be paying. And that, and I wanna know out of that fifteen thousand, cause I know there will be people sitting right here, and we all said, wait a minute, we didn't get billed, or they didn't get billed, okay, so were those bills paid?
Yeah, corrected by.
You, I think you mentioned it, actually.
Yeah, it went to my spam, I caught it, I baited it, and we brought it to the attention and it was fixed, so that it isn't spam anymore.
We, we appreciate you letting us know when we can resolve it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a computer thing, yeah. I don't, I mean, like you said though, I don't know how you hold people accountable if they don't pay.
I don't know. Okay.
So we will, um, we will get job descrip-, I'm hearing that you, if, we'd like job descriptions for all the staff, and, um, and then the, the deficit that we had last year, the unpaid question.
Do you also wanna price for free lunch for all? We could certainly provide you with that number if you wanna add that to your budget.
I think we were just being a little bit, you know what, we wish we could, a perfect one. Yes, we wish we could, cause we certainly would. Kids gotta eat till, they're bringing to work and learn, so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, Exeter just instituted free lunches for their elementary kids.
They're important, everybody.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, and other, and states have across the board, so, I'm not suggesting that that's what we do, but it's, the federal government really missed out.
I, well, you tell me, Exeter.
Well, we're at fifty percent, so, correct.
Yeah. Exeter just actually did something, they've, I don't think they're charging their kids for lunch at all.
He just, he just said that, that's what I'm saying, that's what he just said.
Oh, okay, so, they did, I saw that too, yeah.
So, Exeter is actually doing something, it's not just, oh, sorry, I'm so tired, this is the even-out charge, just like this.
I don't know. I don't know, their grades and their, their academics is pretty good up there, chuck it out.
Okay. I'm over this.
Chuck it out, I'm not a boo hoo, I'm a warrior, but, oh.
Alright.
Alright, page one fifty five, we have the dollar and substitutes, keep the count open. Page one fifty six, we budgeted thirty six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for health insurance. One fifty seven, we budgeted one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars for transport insurance. One fifty eight, we budgeted seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars for, um, FICA for our food service salaries, they were.
Is it FICA or is it FICA?
What, I say FICA, Matt's a FICA.
Now, yeah, 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 yeah.
I always say FICA, but I think you're actually correct.
FICA sounds good, yeah.
For whatever reason, I just can't break that habit, you're, you are.
No worries, no worries.
I had a, um, I had a, I work for a CEO who named his dog Fico, cause that's Italian for fig.
Oh, boy.
And he got picked up in the Boston Globe because people thought that he named his dog after Fico, like the credit schools, so, anyways.
Oh, federal.
Yeah, yeah. We have, at our tax conferences, we have a, um, a lawyer that says lean, but then he also says lean. I'm like, well, which one is it, lean or lean?
It depends how you feel for the moment, right?
Yeah.
Alright, page one fifty nine, we budgeted ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, um, for retirements. Page one sixty, we budgeted four thousand five hundred dollars, um, for repair and maintenance of equipment. Um, so this is our preventative, preventative maintenance, um, plan, water softener, steamer descaling, and equipment parts. Page one sixty one, we budgeted five thousand dollars for non-food supplies, so this would be like our paper goods, um, plastic utensils, gloves, hairnets, et cetera. Page one sixty two, we budgeted eighty thousand dollars for supplies, milk and food, so this is all of our, our food, really.
Yeah.
Um, page one sixty three, we budgeted twenty five thousand dollars for USDA commodities supplies, so this is kind of the staple goods, like that block of cheese, um, that we purchase through USDA and get, um, we get reimbursed a hundred percent for these. Page one sixty four, we're budgeting two thousand two hundred and twelve dollars for our soft-, our food service software. Page one sixty five, we budgeted five hundred dollars for. Page one sixty-five, we budgeted five hundred dollars for equipment. Page one sixty-six, we budgeted one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars for other expenses, so this is our um membership with SNA, our buying group fee, travel expenses and uniforms. And that is the um the end of the food service budget and the the completion of the total operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um so.
Let's see, ask if you wanna switch back to the PowerPoint and sort of show the totals and the default information.
For.
Yeah. So go back to the totals and I also want to review our proposed warrant articles with you.
So where we going into now? The slide.
So this is the total proposal and I will pull up the um the reduction of the um.
Seven hundred and forty-nine dollars.
No. So the by not taking the three point two percent cost of living adjustment for the um school board um stipend, that's seven hundred, I'm sorry, it's forty-six, you said?
Seven hundred and forty-nine.
Seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um and I'm gonna jump to the warrant articles. So we have a on the, so the these align with the capital improvement plan. Um we have a proposal to replace, um this is two really two boilers. Um we've earmarked two hundred thousand dollars, however, we currently have a um RFP out. Um so we'll get an exact number that will have you um vote on once we get that exact number. Um but these are um similar to the ones that just got replaced, they they are reaching the end of their useful life. Um we are incurring some pretty significant um annual repairs and maintenance co- co- costs to keep them operational. Um they're they're roughly this, you know, they're similar age to the ones that have have failed.
So we have a total of three boilers?
So the, so this is two two more boilers?
Right, so what's our total, cuz I know we're replacing in twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, I I then we might have like, I wanna say six maybe, you know what stuff we're listening to?
Oh, it's six boilers.
No, no, I think I think around six.
I think it's six, cuz this isn't the end, so we we replace two.
Yeah. Cuz we discussed it at the last facilities meeting as well.
We have these two and then we have another round on the on the CIP, so for another year. Um that we think we have a little bit more useful life then, so.
Yeah, and this is, this is smart to do this as well as ask for a warrant article for the um capital fund, just so that we're not, cuz I think that reserved fund is like in the fifties, fifty thousand. Sorry, maybe I'm I'm jumping ahead, I know that's you you're gonna say it in like two minutes, but um
Yeah, that's.
the building maintenance expendable trust, cuz we had to dip into that for the last boilers that went. Um and so this is smart to do this as well as ask for that, so hopefully we get at least one to try to.
Well, and hopefully they'll be more efficient than old, you know, in order to, yeah.
Mm-hmm, to try to, oh, and definitely you're saving, you're saving money in water, you're saving money in fuel, you're saving money in maintenance, repair, you know?
Yeah. Can I um ask a question, I don't know if it's necessarily on the page that you're on, I don't know if I missed it or where I missed it, but Seaco Shoe Services. Um where was that at for the amount of money that we paid for that positions, it's like it's an eighty thousand dollars.
Or other support services, where the school resource officer was.
Okay, I need, I'm sorry about that.
It's ten thousand dollars they should pay for that full-time position, they pay ten thousand dollars for that full-time position.
With students, ten thousand dollars.
Right. Right.
The for the um Seaco Shoe Services, I thought we signed something for seventy-eight thousand.
Student assistance, yeah.
No, that's how much.
No, no, I don't know the individual salary. The person for the um person that works with Ms. Patterson.
Ten.
Ten thousand.
Ten, ten thousand.
Pay ten.
Yeah, it's about like a for like ten years.
We get we get a grant that funds the remainder and then so.
Yeah. Yeah. We get a grant the school or we just pay ten thousand to Seaco Shoe Services?
Well, we pay ten thousand.
To them, okay, perfect, thank you.
So um to answer your question, Lacey, we have about I think a hundred twelve thousand dollars expendable trust.
Oh, good.
Um because we we had a contribution this past year that uh.
I don't think, I don't, that vote, yeah, we, the um special education one passed, yeah.
Actually, that one, you know, we remember. That one passed for fifty, so.
Yeah.
Alright, the next item is, we talked about the oil tanks, um so um we are proposing that we actually may do the removal, the next step in the process, um we have a couple of years to do, we have three years to 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 either to quit back in temporary closure or maintain temporary closure or to buy the mon- pay the extra money for the monitoring. But it really, these are not usable, we we should just get rid of them and and stop pouring money out the.
Mm-hmm. Oh.
And the price will probably increase in the next three years to remove that.
Absolutely. So these are two oil tanks uh that would be removed, we've already, actually today, they were removing the oil.
Good.
Um so that that comes off, that it would have been like sixty thousand dollars um that's part of that cost.
Good.
Um then we have a proposal for truck replacements. Um so we, our pickup truck is um it says two thousand nine, I think that's actually two thousand ten, I was supposed to update that, so my apologies.
Mm-hmm.
Um regardless, it's fifteen years old and it's in is really, really reaching the end of its useful life. Um this is really important, just like I said, we transport trash.
Yeah, Michelle's gonna take care of that, though, right?
Yeah.
Come on, come on.
I'm gonna try, I don't I don't think that, you gotta find somebody that has pull, I don't have any pull.
Give it a shot. Maybe we could, that would be good.
So this is, we we had this on with a tractor last year as a combine.
Yeah.
But we ju- we took the tractor off and we and we just need to, again, so this is what we're proposing, we still would like a tra- tractor, but this is the most pressing.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
Um and then we s- we're suggesting to contribute to the building maintenance expendable trust, um and of course we're suggesting fifty thousand dollars, but if the board thinks a different number is appropriate, don't wanna do this at all, that's up to you, but um as we just referenced, that fund is getting pretty low.
What is it, a hundred and twelve thousand?
It's at seventy-seven, seven hundred and seventy-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My listening.
Definitely. Older years, so I'm doing a lot of.
What was that?
Jeez, I I that's why I knew.
Seventy-seven.
Yeah, that's a hundred, yeah. I I think fifty's appropriate, I wouldn't wanna go any higher because we're, it passed last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't.
And I don't wanna go any more because it, I mean, we're gonna get between.
Yeah, my my apologies, yes.
I agree, we just.
And hopefully get them, yeah, sorry.
Seventy-seven, seven ninety-one.
We just gotta.
Yeah.
Try to be creative and.
Um and then we're
Make this push.
And then there's a special education expendable trust, now this this um trust has a healthy balance, um we're at four twenty, so this in my mind is is less pressing than the building maintenance trust.
Yes.
Um if I had to choose between the two.
We talked about that last year, cuz it's usually projected as like what, three, you like to keep it at three hundred, is it? For the special education.
The target amount is four hundred.
Okay.
Actually, it's target amount's five hundred, that's not updated yet, um that's we're at four twenty.
Target, we adjusted it last year. But what was it? Cuz we had talked about leaving it off last year, cuz it's up there pretty good, and I wonder what you.
It's four twenty, four hundred twenty thousand.
Well, with all these out-of-school replacements and and every, you know, and with special education being legally mandated, I would
With the one year.
I would hate to leave this off the ballot in case something does um require money that's outside of our our budget, so I think this is
We can.
and I I and I think this has been successful for the last five years, I wanna say.
If if is this typically tasked?
It's it's, yeah, so I mean, we should take what we can get.
So and then the final um warrant article is the um citizens petition from Sacred Heart um in the amount of um twenty-six thousand two dollars.
And Seaver currently has twenty-two students attending Sacred Heart.
Correct.
And it's um, I just want the taxpayers out there to know that these are kids that are going to Sacred Heart, so.
Yeah, but their parents pay for it, correct?
No, we pay, their parents pay and um we have to pay through Title One um a certain percentage of students that go there as well, and then I think this is for, this is asking for money for the things that are listed up there, which is different than the tuition.
Yeah, the parents pay the tuition, this is for supplies, so technology, supplies and books.
Yeah.
Um and they got, and Sacred Heart does got a very small um portion of um
Title One.
Title funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that is it for warrant articles, so I I guess I'm it's up to the board how you wanna proceed, um I know that there is the outstanding food service question, so we can get you that information. Um and then you could probably.
I don't think that holds up the vote, though, I think that if if the board wants to vote on the percentage in front of them.
You can always make a change, we have we have plenty of time.
Yeah, I mean, they can.
Um you have.
Is it four, what did you say?
You have a, you actually have a, well, yeah, so we have two, we have two more budget meetings scheduled, so we can reconvene
Right.
for either of those meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Um you also have a school board meeting on the ninth, but um at that point, it's too late because the actually the budget committee is meeting to review those, the uh budget that night, right after this meeting, so. Um.
So we have a meeting set for Tuesday, and then the next Tuesday, is there any way that we can move that meeting for this Tuesday coming, if
Yeah.
you feel we need to continue and we don't have a decision tonight, can we just save the other ones, we don't really have much to go through? And it's um Thanksgiving week, a lot of people are off and just wondering if we can move that one, so we don't have to do it on Tuesday, we can do it the next Tuesday, if needed, are you guys ready to vote tonight, I mean you have the presentation, huh?
I just want to vote on the budget as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you don't have to do it, I mean, it's it's up to you, so if you, the votes would be for the overall budget, which would be
Mm-hmm.
currently nineteen million two hundred and seven thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Yeah.
And then the warrant articles, which you can either vote on individually
I just will.
or as a whole, um so that's that's.
I'm ready, if everybody else is ready, and then we can um adjust it, you could add that next um meeting not Tuesday, but the Tuesday after if needed.
But does that defeat the purpose of voting for it tonight, to adjust it in a week?
Why? Well, how are we gonna adjust it, though?
I just feel like there was a lot of questions, a lot of questions.
Well, I, we, well, you guys requested um information about the school, so in the.
I'm just throwing it out there, it's up to you.
So I feel comfortable to make a motion right now to approve the six warrant articles as presented.
Yeah, second.
Alright, motion by Lacey on the warrant articles.
Sorry, Denise is phenomenal.
That's okay.
Alright, so Lacey, Maria, you second? Maria seconded.
Yeah. And then we can.
All in favor of the warrant articles?
All in favor. I will hold on the other one and hold on the information.
Alright. In anonymous.
Thank you.
Are you?
Okay. I'm fine with holding on not to forget the information.
I mean, again, again.
Well, I I just, I just, I'm just trying to be courteous, cuz I know you guys are the ones at the questions, I really um.
But if you don't want to, I mean, this for the CSO, just to you.
And like I said, you can make the vote and then it you can revote with any changes at any point in time, you know, warrant articles, so it's, you have the flexibility.
That, yeah, there's just those couple of questions, no.
You can really, uh, no.
Yeah.
And then re-vote.
So wanna wait until we get the information.
I mean, I feel like as you're going through it, there was a lot of, I mean, I don't know, everybody's, what everybody said, but questions and people were asking for more information, so I think
Yeah.
making a decision without some of that and then I mean, I wanted to revisit the interventionist and teacher, which you had brought up before, so making a decision without even talking about that, I feel like is also, well, and I'm sure.
Yeah, just make, don't. Cover you the.
I think you think of things, you might think of things too, so.
Mm-hmm. Do you wanna go through, you got a nice list there.
So what what do we?
No, if you wanna go through it and then we'll we'll prepare for the next meeting, just let everything be listed.
So if that is the case, do we wanna reconvene on the twenty-fifth or do we wanna wait till the second?
I'm available whole days, I put it in this.
Me too.
I would like the second if we could, and I don't know what Jen needs, but we'll still be in town, I mean, it's not holding anything up on the budget end, right?
But we will definitely have to make a decision, that will be somewhere on the second.
Yeah. Yeah, and Jen will be here too.
Yeah, cuz that's, that's a week prior to, that's like the last possible time to get the budget committee.
Yeah.
Right.
But can you send, that's like if if Casey goes through some of the points bulletin, can you send them as soon as you can?
I didn't write everybody's bulletin points.
I know, but I bet you got a lot of them.
No, there aren't that many.
Yeah.
No, no, Matt answered all my questions on off the.
So yeah, but yeah, to answer your question, any any outstanding question, we can email to you, so I will, I'll send the food service um job descriptions, the food service deficit.
Okay. Yeah, that is a big one.
Um and and you wanna, and I I know it's.
The interventionists. But what do, what information are you looking for for that?
So things that I was thinking, and I don't know if these are necessarily questions, but thoughts, um and I, cuz I agree with some of your points, I don't we're making progress, I think the amount of progress we made is tremendous in that timeframe, but we wanna keep doing that, our classroom sizes are shrinking as well. Um but I know there there are still a lot of regular ed students that need extra support, that are not required by law to get that extra support, and I don't wanna take that away and backtrack all the hard work that we've done.
Mm-hmm.
And I know there's been curriculum changes um that have also been positive, so I guess I'm thinking like how how can we have our cake and eat it too, which I know we can't and trying to stay responsible, so
Yeah.
you know, I I don't know who and I don't know enough about certain goals, but I'm thinking like, are there other shifts we can make, are there other positions that maybe could absorb some of another goal to not sort of lose what we already have and gain what we need? Um you know, like we have, we have a special ed director, director of special services, and then we have another position, I don't really know what it's called, that sort of shadows some of the same stuff, um so could that person absorb some of the special education instruction, is that a possibility, I don't know if it is or not, but um you know, are there other, I mean, again, these are just random thoughts, but like
Mm-hmm.
Or do it all.
back in the day, library and stem kinda alternated, could that be a possibility in having those teachers provide some of the regular ed interventions for, say, reading and math? Um you know, could our curriculum director now that we're kind of in better standing curriculum, where there was a lot of work happening a couple of years ago, and now we're doing a little better pick up some some of the, whether it's intervention or teaching, I don't know, and I don't know everybody's credentials and who can do what, but I'm just trying to, yes, brainstorm ideas of how we can meet the needs that we have to contractually meet for special ed.
Mm, brainstorming, yeah.
Um and also not take away from regular ed so that we can keep up with this trajectory and continue to make such strides that the gap is closing more progressively, I guess, if you understand.
I think that's possible, then I think that's a great um outcome.
So I don't know if there's any questions in there, but that's kind of like this, what I'm wrapping my head around.
Right, that's what I'm trying to hear. I mean, I mean, it's.
And so you're ready to make a decision because of brainstorming, yes.
I'm talking about uh eliminating, eliminating the role of um case manager who essentially manages the paperwork for all of the other special education teachers, so that would require them taking on additional paperwork instead of.
Maybe not eliminating, but sh- I don't know, sharing, sharing a role amongst other people to cover the role without doing it, I guess.
Right.
So that's what we, that's, so that's kind of what we were doing is each of the the case managers took care of all that that paperwork. And then we, uh in a, in an efficient, in a move to increase more efficiency, we we put that on one person, which we think actually
Which we need.
reduces the amount of staffing that we need overall. Um so I think, I think that's a great like line of thinking, but I think in that specific example um it'd be diff- it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be gaining anything.
It would be a net savings because we have the teachers having to have more time dedicated to doing paperwork, right?
So.
So the services, so their ability to provide services drops and then that, so it's a kind of a wash, I think it actually is a it's creates less efficiency.
Well, you can look at it for the next ten rounds, so I think that is a big area, I don't wanna see anything taken away from regular education and we cannot take anything away from special education, but we certainly could take a, take a deeper look at job sharing, and I know and I don't wanna bring Hampton up, but I will, so Hampton, um the the principal and the teachers sharing a lot of about curriculum, and we've talked about curriculum. Sharing a lot of about curriculum and we've talked about curriculum, we kept our cur, curriculum position, but we had talked about it, you know, how. How much it needed, they don't have that at these other schools, but we kept it here, so I think just kind of looking at, um is there areas. Like Casey just said, that we can share and and um, I don't know what you wanna call it. Spread it out, because I do not wanna see anything else taken away from regular ed either right now and I know it's not state mandated, but in my heart. In my mind, cuz I see these kids that are struggling, I don't wanna touch that intervention, anything if we don't have to for regular education right now.
Mm-hmm.
We're seeing too many. Gains and we're seeing too many kids that, not too many, but a lot of kids that are really, 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 um. It's helping them and to shut them off because we have to do this side of it, I think we've gotta find a happy medium and sharing and delegating, that's the word I was looking for.
But do we have it in the, do we have it in the budget to do?
Yeah, I mean, I think our perspective was we prioritize maintaining the low class sizes over some of those intervention needs, the assessment of the administrators was that there was lesser. Assessment need, particularly at the elementary level, correct me if I'm wrong Tim, and that the smaller classes was your preference coming into this meeting, right?
Yeah, and I think knowing where the budget went last year when there was a proposal to reduce the classroom. Position and that obviously wasn't perceived well, keeping that in mind as well as we're making these decisions, um.
But I think to the teachers, if they had to speak out about what help, and that's another thing that's really hard for me too, cuz we're going over the budget tonight and I was so hopeful. That Michelle, you know, had reached out that we were going to hear from everybody, kinda how are things going? What, you know, what do they look like and we didn't get that opportunity and here we are in budget season, but I would have loved to have heard.
Well, again, I.
From the staff because I'm telling you, I hear nothing but glowing um about the extra help that's being given and this is helping the teachers, the classrooms. And I ju, regular education just seems to get hit all the time and our kids need help too, you know what I mean, whether they're five oh four. IEP or regular ed, they all need help, they all do.
No one defeats that, and if we wanna add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget, then we feel we can, you know, then we can maintain what we have.
If we need to.
If, would it be possible to. Okay, we're talking about two, could we. Transition one person and add one, like could we do one person?
And one is.
Yeah, and add some of that.
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars there.
And one is paid by the grant, right?
No, we don't have room in the grant, we've moved the RBTs into the grant, we didn't have enough Sunday.
We did, because it's, does decrease.
Oh, we moved the RBTs into the grants, which, so is there a chance that we could decrease any of that area then?
No, we're fully utilizing the grant.
No, because there's. Special education services.
Doesn't mandate four though.
So we.
So we would have to add money to, by the, in order to.
I, I have two for five days gone now.
Just look, yeah, so look.
And that's the, that's the staffing analysis that's, that we explained as far as looking at the IPs and the services required, so it's pretty, that's pretty straightforward, now, the board has the discretion, if you.
Right.
If you don't wanna cut the interventionist, that's entirely up to you, or you could cut anywhere else in the budget, you could cut a.
Right.
A classroom teacher and have class size to fourteen instead of eleven, you could, you could.
The unfilled positions have been here for, yeah.
Reassign curriculum director, you can reduce a unified arts position if you want us to look at sharing halftime library, halftime STEM.
We felt that our proposal, we felt had the, the least impact on students and was the most, and it made the most sense.
Halftime, halftime, right.
That doesn't mean that that's the route that you have to do, like that you have that ability to prioritize different positions, you could look at UAs, you, I mean, you can look, you can cut anywhere.
Right. Well, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, what's.
But we rely on you two because we're not.
Like, I didn't. When you're talking about adding two positions at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on what happened in previous budgets. Versus reallocating people into positions who could potentially be certified. For us, that was not an easy decision, but decision that made sense, I mean, I think every meeting all of us say we want the.
Right.
Citizens to pass the budget, we want them to, we wanna be fiscally responsible, we wanna come in at a certain case point.
Yes.
But we want to quit to be serviced first.
And, and I think no one would disagree with that, Maria, I think, yeah, we talked about this.
That's what we're fighting for.
But we don't think a ten percent budget was gonna pass, so yeah.
We. Push that, yeah, like we need to push that, I, I.
Yeah.
I think in the past it wasn't, it wasn't pushed in a positive way.
It wasn't pushed. Not, not saying anybody wasn't doing what they could, but there was a, a negative connotation in the community.
Right. But, yeah.
Well, I think.
Well, I remember when I was on the, when it kinda.
There was a withdrawal, if I dare to mention it, that was a horrible um upset to everybody, I mean, we all had to go through. The bumps and the bruises from that, we're not facing that this year, so the attention and the focus is much different and I do think though you have a lot of.
Should've.
Good points and I think I'm not telling you what to do, as the administrators, I'm asking you to listen to what we're saying and come back and give us some ideas at the next meeting of how. Cuz I, I absolutely will not support, and I'm telling you that right now, anything to do with eliminating, possibly even, our regular education.
So. I feel like our administration has done that, I mean, I don't think they take it lightly, I think they're trying to rework everything.
Well, I'm.
No. I, I'm just trying to understand what the parameters are, right, we can't reduce classroom teachers and we can't reduce intervention and we can't reduce special education. Uh, special education, we can't, the other two I'm hearing, you don't want reductions in either of those, so that would mean unified arts or administration or support staff.
I, I mean, what I want is I want our budget to pass, I want people that are continuing to say.
Right, that we're revisiting support staff.
Share. Yeah.
We want higher test scores, we want this, we want this, need to.
Stuff up.
Remember that, yeah, at the ballot and, and push it, I'm, I'm not saying we, I want you guys to be doing something different, I want more support from our community, I want to be able to say. We need this and we need this, not this or this, and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
People come and do it, you can't complain about something if you're not willing to, to put forth the resources needed to, to make gains across the board.
I, I'm just trying to understand, if you want us to come back to the next meeting with a reduction of where else you could find two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings, we can do that, if you're looking to add.
No, she said, she, Casey didn't say that though, she said share, is there areas where we could delegate and share and make it.
But.
That way, she didn't say cut things. And I didn't, certainly didn't, I don't want to touch intervention though, I'm sorry.
But, but are we, if we're working with the, the bottom line that was in the proposed, but I'm trying to understand, are we working with the bottom line in the proposed budget or are you asking us?
I think that's the conversation I want here, do, do we feel like we could increase this and get it passed?
Yeah, me too.
I think we have a lot of information that I feel like if we s. I don't wanna say sit on it, but to, to just think about it, because we took in a hundred and sixty-six pages of information tonight and it was kind of, you know, all where.
Can.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
You guys, I, and I understand the amount of time and energy that you put in planning this, it takes months and it takes several people and, and meetings and everything. But I think maybe we need to take some time as a board to sit and absorb this information, um email them as soon as we have any questions or, or we need more information.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then meet at the next meeting and discuss how we wanna move forward with the budget, I mean, this is the biggest, I think this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The biggest point that we need to, or thing that we need to figure out is, is how do we wanna do this, are we, do we wanna do what was proposed to us, do we wanna say, hey, we need a, a two hundred and fifty bucks?
Yeah.
Do we wanna add, well.
Do we wanna take one teacher and, and switch them and, right.
That's, that's more of the thing, you're. Having conversations, you're not ready to make a decision, you need to sit on.
So the, the reason I'm asking though is if you need us to provide additional information or to propose, what would it look like to find two hundred and fifty thousand dollars somewhere else, we need to know that. Because you've told us that we're having one more meeting now on December second and we have to decide that night, so we're not gonna have time to go back and provide information.
It's further away from Tuesday, at least.
I think what Meredith's saying that if we come back to that meeting, so we need to know what it means.
Right, but, like, we only get that meeting, so.
We need to be ready to vote, right?
Yeah, well, we technically would be tonight if it weren't for just these little few things hanging out there, but I think we can get answers, show, show us the picture, you know, what is it?
They're big things, but. But I don't know what answers you need, that's what I'm trying to say, if you're not asking a question for her to be able to answer it.
Right.
So, I think it might, I. I think it, it, you've got a lot of information tonight, I think, I think I'd probably be prudent to, if you don't mind, keeping next week's meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And, and why don't, why don't you take a couple of days.
I would just.
Like review them and think about it, review the materials, email me any questions that you have, any information you want me to get you, um and then we can, we can re. Re, revisit it next week and then we're not rushed on the, the third, cuz that, on the second, like.
I don't wanna make any decisions rushed on the second.
No, but I also, can you, so, can you supply to the school board by Tuesday, this is a question?
I want, I want you to all be very comfortable.
Right.
Casey shared quite a few things um about the different, you know, analysis of what could be with sharing and how could we do this? Um can you prepare what a shared would look like and if there is space for the share? And what it would look like if we just put that amount of money in, um back in, because if you can't get that information by Tuesday, we're just gonna be screwed.
But you're not being specific.
We should.
Share was.
Yeah.
Well, Casey raised three points, Casey, Casey raised three points, one was eliminating essentially Angie's role and redistributing that, which I think you've already heard from our student services done here.
Like you're working with more than her, um.
Okay.
Role?
Well, not, or, no, you know, not eliminating it, just if there's any.
Reasign.
Again, I don't know what the hours that we need for services, but if there's room to. Absorb some of the role that's not filled into an existing role, if that makes sense.
Well, I think it would be reducing the class, eliminating class.
And I don't even know, I just was figuring out stuff and I'm trying to think what other stuff's coming in, but.
But, right now, but I, but I can figure it out, but. Uh, I mean, uh, the answer's not gonna change before Tuesday, but yes, we can answer that question. The other question I heard was could we share library and STEM at the elementary school, so that would be a deduct, a reassignment as well of a position, but you want it from unified arts instead of intervention, so yes, we can tell you. How that would impact the rotation um for unified arts, and the third thing you said was um. The curriculum director position, so you have, your curriculum director is under contract, but you're essentially asking, could that individual be reasigned?
No, 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 no.
No, she's not a position, but I, I mean, I don't know what we need out, like physical out, but say, say that we move these two interventionists to special ed, but they're.
Right.
Not a position.
I know that there's kids, I mean, I have friends in the community, I know there's kids not on IP's getting intervention that continue to need it year after year, so, so say there was.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Maybe five hours that that position could give to that if we did switch those people over, does that make sense, I'm not saying eliminate the role, I'm just saying.
Right.
Could some of that time of that role be allocated to support something else?
So you'd be reassigning, you, you'd be reassigning that role, yeah.
Sharing.
Delegating, I like those words.
Well, it's, it's a.
But is it possible?
It's not a delegation, it's a reassignment.
Is it, that's what we're asking.
So do you mean like, like.
Right, I think we understand that question.
Like, um, like, say, and this is just all hypothetical, say, we're looking at fourth grade and each class has a, a general ed EA in it and they. Take those two and they move them to special education and then maybe have one general ed A, EA float between two classes, something like that, where they're sharing. Roles, is that what you mean?
No, she's talking specifically about the curriculum.
We're just talking about EA, right. If those were just positions that.
Right.
Were one.
And I don't know what the whole week entails, but just trying to think of. A classroom teacher can't, a classroom teacher's in the classroom all day, right, so they can't come out of the classroom to do something else, so positions that maybe are not.
So they.
Yeah.
In a classroom all day, if there was room to take a few hours from those positions to give to s. Say we have whatever, thirty students that need reading intervention and now we have one, that aren't on an IP, now we have one reading interventionist, that's too many. Could another position take two kids or something like that, that's more what I'm saying, I'm not saying, I know it's reallocating, but just not the whole goal, just some of the time. I, I don't know if that's a thing.
It's, yeah, it's delegating, is there a time, is there time, is there people?
I think we're better off just to add another interventionist.
It's a. It's a reassignment, yeah.
Essentially, is what I'm hearing.
No, well, I call it a delegation, uh delegating, I don't call it reassignment, cuz they already have their positions. They're already under contract, is there time throughout that day that they need to.
So you're changing what you're asking them to do, so you are reassigning them.
Right.
They were just ideas, I just, I, I.
What is it, what is the cost?
No, and I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not being critical, I was interpreting them as questions and those were some specifics.
Yes, but I wasn't saying get rid of the role, and, and I hate saying add to the work they're already doing, but essentially that is, is kind of personal.
No.
Those are the exact type of questions that you should be asking, no, I, I really just.
But as, but as needed, like I said, like if, I mean, maybe there's only five kids.
It just doesn't move, it's such a.
I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to make sure those are the three things that I heard.
Yeah.
But if you added it interventionist, what would that, what would the cost be?
Hundred twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, hundred twenty-five thousand.
You're adding two.
You're adding special ed teacher, just what you're adding. Fifty give or take for, for both positions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you keep, you just be reducing one interventionist position, um.
And then don't forget about the um shock versus the, that whole scenario too, cuz we definitely need to find out.
We have that left. Yep, we have that left.
Are there any other questions um that you'd like us to follow up on, I'll, go ahead.
Uh, you know what, now you can pass, now you're in for it. Can, so I remember last year some conversation taking place, so the SAU is three point two percent, I guess. Does Seber have to, does Seber have to agree to pay three point two percent because of.
So you, you have, you have the discretion to pay whatever, non, non-union COLA, you can do.
Or can we say now? On Seber's side, we're gonna give one percent to the SAU.
The SAU budget has already been adopted.
Yeah, but on our end, as Seber, as.
For Seber non-union employees, you can make a decision on COLA, actually.
No.
But non-union, just in our, just in our school.
But you can adjust that to our.
I'm talking, well, yeah, I'm talking about the SAU, well, the administrative position.
They don't.
No, you don't, you, you have, the SAU.
That was the vote on the.
Line item is ratified and now it's the fault.
Yeah, so we can't, this number, this came up last year, we'll just see if we have to do it if that is what it is.
That's a joint board decision.
No, the discussion was about whether or not Seber needed to pay the same rate for its support staff positions that the SAU was paying and you don't, you can.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
You can provide a lesser COLA, um it may make you less competitive for hiring, right, because your wages will be.
Right.
But I'm not talking about staff, I'm talking about administration at the SAU office.
Right, you can't adjust that.
And we said no, that's, that's, that's a joint board decision, that was ratified, you cannot change that.
Okay. And that was a no. Okay. Okay, that was my question, that was a hot one, huh? Just ask them.
So I, I think we have a lot of information that, and I think we should meet the twenty-fifth, um even if you wanna put a cap on it where it's, you know, a, like a six P M.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cap, but I think it definitely from now until then, we'll have some information um that Matt would provide and some time to kind of, to think on our own without. Being on the spot and, um that, and that will give us some time to be able to email Matt and Meredith, any questions that we have that pop up while we're trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
I honestly think.
And then meet again no, in, on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, because I think we do need that meeting in between, I don't wanna be rushed into something December second.
So I, so I'm gonna say this, it's today is. But it is, right, it's a closed day, tomorrow, they're not gonna have time to get on this, there's a lot going on. The weekend, they definitely shouldn't be working on this, um and it that burns us to Monday and then we're Tuesday, so I'm just trying to add a fairness to everybody, cuz I think it's a lot. And that's just my opinion, a lot of different scenarios, but if you wanna push it uh to Tuesday, that's fine. But I ask specifically that we go to the next meeting and if we cannot come to an agreement, which on those little things right there, we should be able to easily come to an agreement once they have given us. Enough information, but it's up to you.
We should, very, to answer for Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I would rather it keep Tuesday.
Okay, and if I can't make it, I hope you don't vote on it, cuz I'd like to be here and that's why I asked if you could switch it or not, that's all.
Well, I think the plan is to vote on it, probably Tuesday.
The plan is to vote on Tuesday.
No.
Well, we have, we, we had those, we scheduled those three meetings per budget, so I don't know if we're gonna vote, it depends on what we get for.
Yeah.
Feedback.
Feedback.
Okay.
I would watch out, I would schedule Tuesday.
Did we have anything else other than budget and warrant articles?
So your next meeting dates are Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Yes.
For your second school and then if you have one for Tuesday, December second, if needed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's no non-public, I'm just looking at the film, and then you have adjourn.
Okay.
Who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-nine.
Oh, I thought you.
I said, where's Jen, come on.
I said, sorry, I'm sorry.
It's second.
Second in by, Maria.
Yeah.
All in favor? All in favor?